You want to hurt me.
I think he needs to, I think he needs to bring up his.
Okay, well, welcome to October twenty ninth, twenty five council meeting. We're going to do nine thirty AM department head meeting first. Somebody would like to come up to the mic and.
Thank you. Got a couple of things within the court's budget that I'm going to talk about and Judge Hawkins has a couple as well. The first is the wages for the chief court reporter, deputy court reporters and bailiff. The figures that the council approved are actually lower than what I'm calculating the annual wages are for those employees. At this time, if you will remember, partially through this year, we got rid of one bailiff position and added, I believe, five thousand dollars to the wages of the chief court reporter, the four court reporters and then the one remaining bailiff, which puts chief court reporter at twenty six dollars and sixty five cents currently. Deputies at twenty three sixty five and the bailiff at twenty two fifty seven an hour. So multiplying that by thirty six hours a week and fifty two hours or fifty two weeks in a year. I'm coming up with higher figures than what were approved by the council. I can provide those to you. I provide them to a council member, Martin, as well. So if you want to do, obviously, we're going, we would advocate for a percent increase. But we understand that because they received a mid-year raise, you may not be willing to do a percentage increase on top of that. So I can give you the numbers for what it's zero percent raise. You've got.
We have them. Guys, it looks like we didn't go off the twenty twenty five amended budget when we calculated.
And on some of them, if I may, there is some confusion about that because there were transfers done into the separate funds. However, they weren't transferred into the separate line items because we didn't really need to at this point. We've got to get a little closer to the end of the year to see how much money we need in each of those distinct line items. We added the equivalent of three thousand dollars per person in there. But it's going to shake out being probably less than three thousand dollars per person based off where we were in the year. But I'm open to any questions on those wages if you have any.
Okay. So I'm in. I'm in Superior Court.
You're going to be in Circuit Superior and Joint Courts.
Okay.
I just always know that in the past when we have given out substantial raises mid-year, that they normally do not receive incremented increase that we give at the end of the year because.
Right.
And they substantially got more than three percent already and. So I would be in favor of leaving them where they're at at their amended.
At the amended budget? Yeah, I'm inclined to agree. So in Superior Court, top two lines, we had thirty nine, eight, nine, nine. They need to go to forty two, one, one, six.
What position was that? I'm sorry.
That's not what I calculated. I apologize.
What, what number were you coming up with?
So deputy court reporter, I've got currently at twenty three dollars and sixty five cents an hour times.
You're doing two different things. You're doing the hourly and then they're doing the line item.
Yeah.
Right.
The line item is just the money that you can spend. So if, if you're doing it in the salary ordinance, we'll be the one that would take precedence over these numbers.
So what are you calculating at their current hourly, what they would make in a year?
For deputy court reporter, I've got forty four thousand, two seventy two and eighty cents. So forty four, two seventy three.
And that's at their current rate with no raise?
Correct. Correct.
Is that what our salary ordinance is?
I think we can adjust the numbers and double figure them.
Okay. Okay, as it relates to the salary ordinance, we'll make the adjustment.
Okay, and there are, and you've got the, what the annual amount would be for the chief court reporter and the bailiff as well?
Yes.
So it's the chief court reporter, deputy court reporters and the bailiff.
The only other thing I have.
Well, we're going to figure the numbers here.
Okay, so what I've got the chief court reporter at is twenty six dollars and sixty five cents an hour multiplied by thirty six times fifty two. I'm showing at forty nine thousand, eight, eight, eight and eighty cents. So I'll round to forty nine, eight, eight, nine. Deputy court reporters, I've got them at twenty three sixty five an hour multiplied by thirty six times fifty two is four, four, two, seven, three rounded up. And bailiff is at twenty two fifty seven an hour. Same calculation reaches forty two thousand, two fifty two rounding up accounting for change.
Our start pay is different than what he is stating on, on the chief court reporter, I believe it was.
Like the date?
Chief court reporter was four, four, seven, three, seven, and he's at four, four, seven, four, zero.
Three dollars?
That was all by three dollars.
Deputy court reporters were our start pay. So would end up being forty two on sixteen.
I just multiplied the starting hourly rate times thirty six times fifty two.
Yeah, that's not how we do it. They give you a lump sum and then when it gets to the salary ordinance, then they decide what the hourly rate is. They multiply it by three percent or whatever it's going to be.
Right, but then they did the mid-year raise. Right.
Okay, but we're starting with these positions. We're going to maintain the same hourly rate that they received in the middle of twenty twenty five.
I'm just saying that start pay is not what your book says. So I just want everybody on the same page.
Okay.
So actually, the line number should be hourly rate times hour times twenty six and that's. That's not how you guys do it. You just take it, you always take it and you do the times the percentage and then you put it in here and then we do the hourly rate.
But we're not doing a percentage on the, these positions currently.
So we should go back to the former, which. It, it's okay. We're figuring.
We'll get it recalculated and corrected.
Thank you. The only other thing I had is within the circuit court budget, office machines, which is the very last line item. Within that, we requested five thousand dollars for that. We had a budget of twenty five hundred for twenty twenty five. The council approved a zero dollar budget for that. I'm asking at a minimum that one thousand dollars be appropriated towards that to, for any unexpected that came up. I know last time Ms. Martin asked me what exactly it's for and I said, I don't know, Tracy. We had the laptop on the bench. The battery exploded that needed a replacement. We replaced it with a used laptop. We have a joined criminal defendant jury trial coming up, so we had to add a microphone. So those took precedent to the two computers that we planned on replacing this year. So ultimately, I, I would like five thousand dollars to replace two computers we were supposed to do this year and the two computers we anticipate for next year and leave us some wiggle room for any unanticipated expenses, equipment that breaks, things like that. But at a minimum, I would ask, if you say, don't get anything new, that we need a thousand dollars just in case something comes up, so.
It looks like you've spent around sixteen hundred this year of the allotted budget from previous.
I don't have the most updated.
Are the department heads aware of what the plan was for the computer replacements? Have we communicated that with them?
No.
Should we do that? On, as far as the replacement computer goes, that, that was an area that we chopped out of, I think, everyone's budget. And with the intentions of paying for that out of Q cap, if I'm correct.
Yes.
So if, if you budgeted for a computer replacement and it was chopped down to zero, that was the intention there. We're trying to eliminate that money out of the general fund and pay for it out of Q cap. So now I know that's not all of what you just.
I understood. If I could have a thousand to address, because it's not all computers, we've got recording equipment, some other stuff within there. Just to give ourselves a little bit of breathing room if something comes up or we don't have to worry about transferring money around to be able to repair or replace one of the pieces of equipment we need.
You guys find we're doing a thousand in that line item and.
Yeah.
It's just for repair only, like, like repairs.
We do have a repair line item within it. This is if something gets so broken down that we have to replace it.
Okay.
So it is a capital.
What page is that?
Be a capitalist.
Twenty two. Okay, we'll do a thousand. Yeah, we'll do a thousand in that line item.
I think that's all I have. I know Judge Hawkins has some more.
Good morning.
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 I think I can help you offset that thousand dollars. So just remember. No. So on the.
Office machines.
I'm sorry. On the probation officer salaries, it appears that the chief probation officer received a five percent increase and the rest were two. And I don't know if that was the intent or not, but there's already an increase or there's already an amount in the salary that has contemplated for that. And so I would ask if the intent was to give them a raise, that you make it the same across the board, so lower hers to match the other two. Right, and so in that state minimum, the chief, I think it's five thousand dollars is already in there. So an additional increase, I don't think would be warranted. Chief probation. I think that's the.
So you're saying chief probation should not get the raise?
Well, if you would make hers two, make it the same percentage as the other two officers. So if the other two got two, just make, reduce hers from five to two.
So three.
Three percent. So why aren't, why aren't we just doing what the state does?
They didn't get a raise this year, likely not to get a raise next year. Those were the, those were the reasons we asked for them. I understand typically that has not been the case. That's why I said if that was the intent, I would ask that it not be, that the chief get a higher percentage increase because that's already contemplated in the state minimum. And that's one of the reasons too, we're having issues filling, filling the other spots is a lot of places pay more than the minimum and so.
Brady, what are you calculating that we gave?
You know what, instead of, can we just maybe note all this stuff and then go over at the end instead of trying to rush and figure numbers and.
Yeah, yeah.
And just make a running of what we have to look at in.
Yeah.
If you have questions, call, I'm, I can come down.
So it's the chief probation officer and what would be the other one that he needs to match?
Deputy probation one and deputy probation two. They're already at, at two.
Okay.
So those would be same, but I'm just saying reduce the chief probation officer from five to.
Okay.
Do you want that number real quick or do you want to wait?
If you got it, we can jot it down.
To match the three percent, it is now eight, five, three, one, three is what I have. Eight, five, three, one, three. And it, that was calculated at five percent like you said, so.
So the intent for the others was three percent?
Yes.
Okay.
Regardless, regardless, it'll be the same, it'll be the same percentage is what he's asking for.
He was asking for a reduction. If you don't, I mean.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm just going to call the line behind the judges.
First of all, thank you for all the hard work on the budgets and, and I guess I just talked about mine. I appreciate all the effort and work put in. I only have one thing. During our budget meeting, we talked about the supplemental income for the prosecutor and deputy prosecutor and Ms. Martin brought up that she thought we were already getting it. I don't, I don't know what the council decided. I hope they decided for it. We didn't get a raise this year either from the state. But it's not even listed, whether it's approved or denied, it's not listed on the form. Like it's just missing altogether from our, from our budget form. Right. Typically, even if they don't pass it, it's on there and it says, you know, department requested and then council approved and it wasn't even on there. So I know tree, Ms. Martin had a question about we were getting it this year and we weren't. And so I just wanted to make sure that council is aware and I didn't even know if council addressed it was my question.
We're on page sixty six?
I don't have a page number.
Okay, what, what, what position again?
So the deputy, chief deputy prosecutor and the prosecutor, the council's allowed, or this county's allowed to give a supplemental income. The council had done it in the past. Last year they didn't do it, but when we talked about it, I can't speak for all the council, but at least Ms. Martin was in the assumption that the council did do it. I've asked for it. I think it's appropriate for the number of hours we work and again, we didn't get a raise from the state this year either. But it's not even on.
When we printed the budget worksheets, we did, we didn't ask what ones had zeros. So if it's not on there, then it did get approved. I'm looking at it right here where we worked on it and both of those are at zero. So that's why it's not on yours.
Okay. Well, I'd ask the council. Okay. In the past, it's, it's always been on there. Even if it was requested, it would said, said zero.
Okay.
And it wasn't on there at all. And so I just wanted to bring it to council's attention that wasn't on there. And I would ask you to reconsider it. I mean, we, you know, we're on call twenty four hours a day and we work well more than, we're, we get paid for thirty seven and a half hours a week and we work well more than that. We didn't get a raise this year. They're saying we're not going to get a raise for the next five years is what we're hearing from our state legislators. And so we make less than the public defenders. The county's agreed to pay the public defenders a hundred and ten dollars an hour. If I only work thirty seven hours and a half hours a week, I only get paid ninety dollars an hour. And so somebody's getting paid twenty dollars more an hour to defend a prosecutor that I am getting to, or defend a child molester than I am getting to prosecute him or a murderer or anybody. And so I would ask the council to reconsider that. I don't expect you to have discussion now, like Tracy's or Ms. Martin said, you can discuss it later. But I would ask you to reconsider that. It, it amounts to, we figured it up per paycheck last year and it was, or two years ago, Ms. Martin and I did. It was like an extra four dollars every two weeks. It's really nothing. But it shows good faith from the, the county council that we're really are working more than thirty seven and a half hours a week. And we're on call all weekend, twenty four hours a day for every emergency that comes up. And so just would ask the council to reconsider that, but I do appreciate everything council's done, so thank you.
What was the requested amount? I apologize.
It's five thousand for each.
Okay.
That's what the council, that's what the county's allowed to give. And when you divide that by fifty two weeks. It equaled dollars. I mean, it was really, I can't remember what the amount was, but once you break it down, I think it was like four to six dollars a week extra. It was really nothing. And so I would ask you to reconsider it for just the chief deputy and I. Because I think we, we earned it frankly, so.
Okay, we'll look at it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Highway, you want to go?
It's an hourly, yeah. How's it going Hunter?
Good, how are you?
Good.
I would like to talk a little bit on, as of this Friday, we will be six employees down with more already putting in their notice. So with winter coming on, we're looking at roughly ten snow routes that will not have a plow driver in them. And that's going to obviously not just affect us, it's going to affect the whole county EMS, sheriff's station. If we can't get the roads plowed, they obviously can't do their job like they should be able to. So I would like, since at least ten years being there, we have never been fully staffed. If we was, it was maybe for six months. We have twenty seven positions total. Right now, I'm down, been down all year consistent about four to five. I would like to ask if I would like to do away with two of the positions and use that money to give them a raise. So doing that, I would like, it would be arranged, so people coming in that's only been there a year or less will be at the twenty three dollars an hour and people that's been there more with experience and everything, I would like them to get twenty four dollars an hour. So hopefully we can keep on our seniority guys. I mean, just this year at the end of the year, after we pay out towards the end of the year, just in my CDL truck drivers, we still have a hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars left in there. I mean, that's just how much we, we're down. So I would like to do away with two of the positions, use that money to go towards the raises for the drivers and the foremans. That being said, myself, the office manager and the non-CDL will stay at the three percent. I'm okay with that, but I would love to get the CDL drivers and the foremans bumped up so we can keep them. Right now, we have eleven people that's under a year, a year and under. It's just, it's not good. It's costing us more money, more money because we have to do more training and more things break and more accidents are happening. So if we can do something to keep them on would be great.
How, how many of the eleven have we paid for their CDL training?
Right now, the eleven that we've paid for their CDL training will be, three of them are there and we have three in the class as we speak right now that hopefully next month they'll be bumping into the.
I mean, how, and how much are we paying for the CDL? Like how much, how much do we pay for that schooling?
For the schooling, so right now, since our foremans are trained to do it, we only pay for their first time to take the test, which is two hundred and fifty dollars. And if they fail, they have to pay it. But since he's trained and he went through the schooling and everything, it's not costing us the forty five hundred dollars or whatever it would cost a regular person.
So they don't, so they, so they don't have to go through the five week or forty some hours?
They do, they do, but we put it on there at the shop and the foreman is over it and he's licensed to do it.
Okay.
So we sent him and got him licensed two years ago, I want to say, when this all kind of started. So it's not really costing the county nothing, but it's bringing us in people quite a bit actually.
It's kind of off subject, but I would, I would encourage you guys promoting that you are saving that person five thousand dollars. And I would, I would do a contract.
We do have one, sorry, I forgot to mention that. We do have a contract. If you leave within the two-year period, you will owe the county the actual full cost of the, which is, or I think it went up this year. I'm not exact on the number, but it's around forty five hundred dollars. And they do have to sign that before they go do all that.
So you said twenty three dollars for new people and twenty four for experienced?
For the experienced people there. And yet again, I thought I gave you one, but I might not have. I got a seniority sheet here and like I said, there's eleven under a year and under. We only have like four people that's two years and two people that's three years, one person at four years and then I'm at nine years, so.
Also, too, on one of his positions, he made a comment when I discussed this with him. They, they, he hasn't had a mechanic for how many years?
Quite a few years. I mean, off and on, we had one. Two years ago, we had one for a little while and then the same one's been off and on for a while.
So every time one of those trucks breaks or something, it's going to, whether it go to Row or wherever, we're paying hundreds of thousands of dollars to send trucks out to get fixed because we're not paying what a mechanic should be paying. You're never going to get a mechanic.
What's your mechanic pay?
Right now, the mechanic pays like twenty three. I wanted to bump, with cutting the two positions, I wanted to bump it to twenty six for the head mechanic and same with the foremans, keep them at the twenty six because they, they're going to be overlooking the shop now and everything, which they have been. But that's what would be nice to get them bumped up to. I think at twenty six dollars, we're going to have, I'm not saying we're going to fill the place, you know, with mechanics, but hopefully we can get someone in there for that pay.
Who wants to be next? Good morning.
Good morning.
I have a couple of issues. I know during the presentations, the prosecutor's staff justified a pay raise because the court staff got a pay raise because of the filing of the cases. Just want the board to be aware, no case gets filed unless it goes through my office. So my staff is really now behind the court staff and the prosecutor's staff. And we're the one, if it wasn't for us, there's no cases getting filed. So I would like that to be looked at, possibly giving my staff more of a raise. They're doing the same, they're doing the same amount of work, if not more, because again, they all, all cases are initiated in our office. Even the ones at the prosecutor's office don't touch divorces, mortgage foreclosures, anything, all cases start with us. I was a little disappointed on the cuts to the election budget. Just to keep you aware that I will be coming back and asking for additional appropriation because there's not, some of the areas that you cut won't even allow me to do the two primary, or the, the primary and the general election staffing that's required by the state to be open twenty eight days. I need a minimum of seven thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars for the primary and the same for the general. And that's a minimum. That's based on if. Clerical.
What's the minimum you're needing?
Well, I mean, the, the bare minimum is seven thousand, two hundred and thirty per election. And that's if there's nobody standing in line at five o'clock. I mean, that's the bare minimum. The state has put in a caveat, I guess, if you will. Every night when the voting is done, the bipartisan team has to open the ballot box, take all the ballots out and separate them by precinct.
So you're short by.
I asked for eighteen thousand and I need a minimum of fifteen and that's, like I said, that's if they only, if they're done at five o'clock and it takes them thirty minutes to do the ballots. Because they have to put them.
Sixteen.
I, I don't have that, I'm sorry. It's under election, under clerical.
It's under clerical. It's the second one.
So sixteen would get you?
You need sixteen thousand?
That, that would be, that would help.
That'd give her a buffer.
That would give me a little bit of a buffer if they, like I said, if there's people standing in line at five o'clock. Until the doors are locked, they can't open the ballot boxes.
So if you have a line, you have to wait for everybody to vote?
Right, yeah, if they're in line at five o'clock until that line ends, which this isn't. Which this isn't a, you know, it's not a pri, uh, presidential election, so the line shouldn't be too bad at five. And then also, under the CCEB meetings, I'm, I'm not sure what line item that is, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, it's about halfway down that page, same page, guys.
What is it?
That's the CCEB.
Oh, there it is, okay.
Uh, the seven hundred is the exact dollar amount that I need in order for the two board members to get paid. Sorry.
How's that calculated?
They, they have eight me, there's eight meetings of fifty dollars a payment, and then there's four meetings throughout the year that I also get paid, because it's after, we're not here.
After hours.
It's after hours. So there's four meetings at seventy-five dollars. Because it's twenty, it's mandated twenty-five dollars a meeting, so that's where the seven hundred, and that's.
Okay. So the second line on the page, guys, we're gonna pencil in sixteen thousand, which gives her about a thousand dollar buffer.
Okay.
And then about halfway down, we'll go back to that seven hundred requested, because it was based on exact math.
Yeah, that's, that adds to the penny.
Okay.
The only thing I just I'm kind of picking my battles. But you guys have the opportunity to, to, uh, right a wrong that was done two years ago. Um, and you chose not to do that with increasing the clerk's pay. This, you know, it, it was something that was a personal decision for the prior board um, to penalize me, but I'm not gonna be the clerk in a year and a half, I'm done. So you're actually penalizing the position. And I just, I think that needs to get back up to where it should be. Um, like I said, traditionally, um, up until the non-pay raise that was not given in twenty-twenty-four, the clerk's pay was around two thousand dollars less than the auditor. And now the clerk's position is almost nine thousand dollars less than the auditor. Which I, I, it's, that's not. I, I think it's inappropriate, I think it needs to be addressed. Um, like I said, this isn't, it's not like I'm here forever. It was something to come after me.
I need you to translate this, because I don't know what you're talking about.
I was, I was not given a pay raise in twenty-twenty-four because of an action that, um, a dispute between the Superior Court Judge and myself, that required an attorney to be hired. Um, ultimately, the Indiana appellate court ruled in my favor. But it still costs the county a substantial amount of money in legal fees. So to offset that, I.
From our attorney, legal fees?
No, I could not use our attorneys. Neither one of our attorneys, Eric, um, Mr. Burns was not able to represent me, nor Ted. The attorney that I ended up using was recommended by Mr. Burns, and that was the attorney that I used. That was specialized in that field.
I have a follow-up question.
Sure.
For, when comparing the prosecutor, the first point that you had, what, um, are you thinking that each department got different raises, or what, what was that?
There, I don't know if that was a mid, and I just know that their staff members make more than my staff members, as well as the court staff, a substantial amount, two, three dollars, four dollars an hour more.
I, I think the percentage is the same.
Percentage is the same.
She's saying there's a gap.
There, there's now a gap, there's never been a gap, until they eliminated a position, absorbed that money in, well.
It was a department shift with one of the ballots going away.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware we did.
But that was, that, that was their main point to get the raise.
Because they, they reconfigured their department to.
Right.
Re-allocate that money, so that's, that's tough.
Well, and I'm not, you know, e, even if it's not dollar for dollar, get it closer, because again, there is not a single case that gets filed in this county that doesn't start in my office. With the exception of juvenile chins cases and protective orders. Those are the only two cases that do not go through our office. Now, we handle the paperwork, but we don't file those two.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi Mike.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Mike Martin, Carroll County Area Plan. Um, I just want, wanted to request that, um, my salary stay the same as it is now, and whatever the increase that you approved, which is sixteen hundred and forty dollars, go to my, uh, office administrator. And also, I would like to take five hundred from my professional development line and add it to my vehicle repair line.
This is page fifty-seven, for anybody who's wanting to follow along.
You can transfer that later.
Wow.
Okay.
Why don't we fix it now?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's a transfer later.
Make a note that you can transfer that later.
I won't ding this if you transfer.
What was the amount?
Four.
Did it transfer to your, uh, number?
Uh, it's sixteen hundred and forty dollars is what it amounts to. That's the increase that I would have received, based on the three percent. I, I don't think it should be a percentage, I think it should be that amount, because that'd bring her just above twenty dollars an hour.
Anything else?
I'm calculating, yeah. What were you calculating the difference in raise was?
It's sixteen hundred and forty, so, you know, my current, you know, salary is fifty-four, six, fifty-three. You approved fifty-six, two, ninety-three.
Oh.
If my math's right, that's sixteen hundred and forty dollars annually. I'd like that to go into, the office administrator would take that up to, what, thirty-eight?
Okay.
Thirty-eight, almost thirty-nine.
All right, we will, we will look at that.
Thank you.
Next. Somebody jump up there.
Good morning.
Morning.
Tom Gross, County Surveyor. Just a couple little things. Under Communications, the five hundred dollars that the council approved is actually under my contracts for cell phone. Needs to be, uh, six hundred dollars to cover my cell phone. Okay.
You might have this page.
Seven.
Seven. Oh, seven.
Page seven.
All right.
Yeah.
Then, um, the other thing came across, we, we were uh, billed for the next year MVP tax support for our office. And that would be for twenty-twenty-six, January to December twenty-twenty-six, for fifteen hundred and four dollars. I just bring that to your attention, that if you're thinking about switching, we need to know before we pay these. I think there's other departments that probably have this too.
Switching what?
Switching from MVP tax to one of the other softwares.
Is he talking about the software that the treasurer wants to switch to, the new?
Correct.
That one? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah. Okay, so I don't know what other departments have that, but that, this bill is due January one, so.
Yeah, I know that too.
Hate to pay that and then switch.
Wait till the last minute.
Which, which line was the cell phone in, guys?
Communications.
Communications.
Oh, communications.
Fourth up from the bottom, fifth.
What was he asking for?
Six hundred.
Okay, so we're adjusting from five hundred to six hundred?
It needs to go six hundred, is that what it is?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's fine. As long as you're making notes.
Anybody else?
Amy Webster, Extension Office. I'm gonna be the positive in your glow. We got some little bitty cuts, but I think we'll be able to work within our budget, and I appreciate the work that you did for us. So, we'll, we'll live within our means, and I think we can make her happen. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is the transfer station wanting to talk?
I was thinking about it. I was thinking about it.
I was thinking about it.
Yeah, yeah.
I realize what everybody else realizes, we gotta cut back on everything. You know, that's just the, the sign of the world right now, you know, and that's, that's fine. Not many improvements throughout my budget, which was, the three percent, you know, I think that that is something that could apply. I think that is something that could apply to, you know, any director. Um, I do find myself a little different. I do know I have a lot of hands-on skills. I know I have fixed and repaired and improved that facility, you know, I mean, it's never, it's never met all-state standards before me, you know, it just, it hasn't. And it does now, and I, I take that seriously. I take my whole job seriously, the time that I get to spend with the community. And, um, I haven't missed any time, I'm always there, and that's a big deal.
Yep.
Because if you're close for, Beth, I had two hours that one time, and you guys got a call. You guys got a call here in the courthouse, where's Dustin? Well, it was a family emergency, I didn't have a choice. You know, but, um, yeah, I don't ever want to be, I don't want to come up here being greedy or anything, but I would like a, an extra dollar for my part-time help, which is basically all, you know, grant money anyways. And, you know, I would like, I would like a little more than three percent. I am a pretty well-rounded worker, um, I do everything there, you know, and there are a lot of different steps, and a lot of different skills that you really do have to be there, from driving equipment to phone calls, scheduling, emails, I mean, there are lots of different things you deal with that, you know, maybe some others wouldn't, you know, so. Um, that's all I got. Everything else throughout the budget, you know, I'll do my best to work with. You know, I know you guys couldn't give me a lot of extra money for this, that, and the other, but I also showed through the year that I can make repairs without calling other people in, which will save us thousands of dollars. Skid steer being example. Um, scale, you know, two repairs on the scale without having somebody come in, like I said, Paul, that's three twenty-five an hour, every time they come in. And they got to, when they, um, do our calibration of the scale for the year. Um, that's actually five twenty-five, and then there's that extra three twenty-five that's their hourly rate too, you know, so. I, I guess that's all. I'm not coming up here to be selfish or anything, and I'm not even asking for a, a separate number. I'm just asking for maybe a little bit more, because I, I do find the work that I do is maybe worth a little bit more than what I'm getting paid. But that's all I got, guys, no disrespect, I, I love serving the, the community, the county, you know, the state even, so. All's well, I just gotta, you know, stand up for myself a little bit, you know.
Appreciate it.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Good job.
Who else?
I don't need the mic, but the sun and water, I appreciate your support. Thank you for our budget.
Okay.
Thank you.
She's just saying thank you, she doesn't need it.
Anybody else? Okay, let's adjourn the department head meeting and start the ten AM budget adoption meeting. So.
We can adjourn the budget.
Right, so we'll just skip that and go to the, uh, regular council meeting, ten-ten. So we need to say the Pledge of Allegiance now? Let's do that.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the consent agenda, does, does anybody have things they want to pull, pull out of that? Entertaining motion? Yes.
I'm sorry, I was talking to her again. What did you ask for?
We're on the consent agenda.
For the transfers, I've had two that brought in, transferred late. So I kind of like to add those to them.
What are they?
One is from the EMS, and one is from the park board. The park board is from pond maintenance to trash and miscellaneous, five hundred dollars. EMS is from medical equipment to medical oxygen for thirteen forty-three and sixteen cents. Maybe could add those, like, you know.
Thirteen forty-four?
Thirteen forty-three and sixteen cents.
You want to do anything, okay.
Well, yeah, get the transfer.
Yeah, okay.
Medical equipment to what? Oxygen.
Oxygen.
We get to do them all at once?
Yeah.
All right, I'll move to approve as presented, all, all transfers. I second.
Cody seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes seven-zero. Yes. You want to do the minutes separate?
Might as well.
All right.
Yeah, we can do the minutes separate.
Motion to approve a minute.
Second.
Move and seconded, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Passes seven-zero. Public hearing of the lit EMS tax. So what, what do we need to do on that?
That was from last time, right?
Fifty minutes.
Okay.
Do we have another public hearing for the?
No.
Okay.
No.
That's just minutes.
Those are just, we're proving the minutes the same.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Review of finances.
Review of finances. So in the general fund, we've got eight million, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, some change. Rainy day fund, we got two million, seven hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars. Riverboat, the balance is four hundred and forty-four thousand. So, that's all I have. Do you want to start, Brady, with your department, say anything about this?
I, everything looked okay, um, for my departments, I mean, they've kind of addressed it as they went, so. Sheriff did have a question about an additional, um, but we can probably talk about that here in a bit, so, I'm okay.
Okay.
All my departments are okay.
Angie?
I spoke with Carol Manor yesterday, I am still waiting on reports from her.
Mine are all good?
Taylor, anything?
Uh, no issue, I mean, the courts had a couple budget issues that I had Tracy's help on, but we'll get through those.
Okay.
Very good.
Okay, very good. Auditors' report.
Um, I sent out the financial reports out last week, and I was just wondering if anybody has any questions about them.
Let me see.
The salary ordinance, the version five is what you've already approved at the last meeting, and just need to, um, is the office manager for the Extension Office, we come up from, uh, forty to thirty-seven and a half, I believe it was. And then I switched the part receptionist, part-time receptionist, excuse me, and maintenance over to the jails, I have them under the sheriff, so those two things, three things that you need to just approve and approve the new salary ordinance. That's up today.
See, seeing a motion?
Motion for?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes seven-zero.
Job description update.
That is, um, for health nurse, you should have a copy of that, you put, um, on the plan view, and it's, it's very minute, I mean, it's just. plan view, and it's, it's very minute, I mean, it's just clarifying some things, right? And the thing that's highlighted is what was approved by the commissioners, I just need, you guys just need to approve it also, um, the department head, I mentioned the department head, went to Kent Earlman, and then the commissioners, it's all of those three approved heads, so now it's up to you.
Make a motion to approve the job description update for the public health nurse.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
The other thing is that you have an invitation to an annual meeting, um, oh, you have to, that's different than the one that's in, um, in the Delphi Development Commission. It's not the colored one, it's the one that's in your stack.
Okay.
Should just be, um, telling you that it, you're inviting me to a meeting, so I can make sure you saw that. The other thing is, I have, um, evidently, we did not yield to you guys the CASA budget were chief for your books, so, or at least it wasn't in my book, so I'm gonna just pass these around, and take one, take one and pass it on.
County attorney Eric Burns.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Looks like we've got two things. The first one is regarding an exchange of real estate. I'm not sure how much you know about this, it pertains to five acres of real estate that the county owns, that there is a proposal that there is going to be an exchange of that five acres of that county-owned property with five acres of property owned by, it's a single tree transportation. Indiana code allows this, it's a way to take value for value and then true it up. So if you transfer five acres, it's worth 100,000, or five acres, it's worth 50,000, then there's 50 grand that's gonna have to get paid to make it even. And that's, that's the process that the county commissioners are asking you to participate in. Your participation is necessary because you have to pass a resolution that essentially says, yes, we, the county council, are interested in looking into this. It also means that you would be appropriating $25,000 up to for appraisal costs. Have to appraise the property because you can't ever deal with county property without having an appraisal that's made public so everybody knows what values are going on here. So there's, there are two documents, and I don't know which ones they have seen, do you know? Both of them, great. So there's the memorandum of understanding that the county commissioners? Excuse me? Got one of them? Well, there is a, there is an MOU, and an MOU is just a memorandum of understanding. The county commissioners are entering into it with the private, single tree, uh, private entity, and it, it outlines what's gonna happen, and I've kind of given you the Cliff Notes version of what is that. Well, we're, we're gonna be acquiring, uh, a piece of property by swap, and there's gonna be, it's sometimes called boot, the term boot is whatever needs to be paid to make it even, and that's, and that's what'll happen, the appraisals will determine what that might be, we don't know what that is yet, obviously. There's also some surveying costs, things of that nature. And so, uh, you are asked to approve a resolution that you have before you, and this is essentially expressing interest, because if you're not interested, it doesn't go forward, and so this is your way of saying, yes, we're, uh, we're interested in looking into this. As far as what the property's gonna be used for, I don't really have those details, um, and perhaps someone on the council or one of the department heads has, uh, that. This is five acres near the Carol Manor, that is the county property.
In exchange for a building?
No, it's the highway department, isn't it?
Yeah.
The MOU said it was by the county, by, near Carol Manor, so.
It, it is, the, yeah, we're, we're giving up the land by Carol Manor and trade for a building, a shop building over by the highway garage, which.
Is that the one, the trucking company?
Yeah, the single tree truck wash that's behind the county building.
Our property.
So do you need a motion to approve, or do we just sign the resolution?
Uh, we do need a motion to approve the resolution of the Carroll County Council regarding exchange of real property. Do we have a number on that, ma'am?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Are we okay without it because of the resolution? Not an ordinance?
Any?
Okay.
Tracy made the motion. They move seconded, any discussion?
Who'll pay the fees for the survey?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Who'll be responsible for the fees?
Counties.
The county will.
County, yeah.
Yep.
Not cheap.
Nope, no, they're not anymore.
Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Tracy.
As far as the 25,000, I'm not sure how that's being handled as far as.
I wanna pass it around.
That's out of commissioners, okay, makes sense, good. All right, any questions on that?
Pass that, second.
Sure.
Uh, the second thing is, a couple of resolutions, uh, they're intended to be alternates, and they have to do with paying for, um, personnel costs, uh, that would be the superintendent and the housekeeper, or just the superintendent, those are alternates. And the payment would come from the rainy day fund. The, um, the desire is to try and take some of the financial pressure, external final financial pressure, off of the Carol Manor, so that they can hopefully, um, become more self-sufficient. And this resolution, uh, you're, you're really looking at budget years 26 and 27.
Yep.
Uh, the one of them says that it will, um, take 26 and 27 and use the rainy day fund to pay for the full-time superintendent, and that's one option. The other option is to do both the full-time superintendent and the full-time housekeeper. All, all other parameters are the same, that is, you're paying the full amount for those personnel costs, total personnel costs, whatever those might be, for the years 26, 27. The alternate is, are you gonna do both those employees or just gonna do the superintendent? So you have a choice to make there.
Discussion on this?
I'm just in favor of paying just one position, superintendent.
Yeah, I thought that's what we previously discussed.
Yeah.
Where did the?
I, I can take blame for that, we, since I kinda made that motion.
Okay.
They had a couple suggestions, and I was like, might as well just draft both and see what people wanna do, so.
Oh, that makes sense.
That's on me.
Brady and I talked to Eric on the phone, and that's how that happened.
Can I, can I say something on this?
Sure.
So, um, I guess this is for the, the Facebook pages and all that that talks about us all the time, which is fine, but, um, this is this council's way of showing a true commitment to the Manor. So we are investing county dollars for two years. As you all know, revenue coming in from them funds their budgets. So this is our way to showing commitment to the Manor, investing county dollars into the Manor, um, in hope of, with some good direction, um, over the next two years, that they can, we don't plan on doing this more than two years out of the rainy day fund. But this is our commitment to the Manor. A lot of us up here feel that we were put in this position because we supported the Manor, um, so this is our, our commitment to the Manor, um, so hopefully the, everyone understands that, and I'm not speaking for everyone, but I'm probably speaking for everyone, so, um, that's what this is.
But to go along with that, we do expect some changes out there, we, we want to make some changes out there, um, we don't want to just coast along and run it the way that it has typically been ran, um, and I, I'm excited because I, I think, I think we can make it work.
So just to note too, so the superintendent's salary is 44,503, and then we will also be paying the benefits out of there, so it will be probably around 58,000 out of the rainy day for the next two years.
We want the insurance and.
Yeah.
Yep.
And currently, I'm only seeing the resolution to pay both, I don't see the resolution for just the superintendent.
And I've only got the one for the single, if you'd like to see that.
Any more discussion on that? Seeing done, uh, let's take a vote, all those in favor?
Yeah, you need a motion. We just make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we made a motion.
I'd make motion to approve the superintendent with all benefits regarding salaries and medical insurance.
Be paid out of.
Yeah, I'll second. Be paid out of rainy day.
Yep, and I'll second.
Brady and Taylor, got that? So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
That may be everything, is there anything else for me, folks? Specifically? Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
I'll bring you a cookie.
I did have one.
One more thing.
On your debt, sorry, you should have had the jail inspection, the 25 on there, I just wanted to make sure I got them, and gave me a copy, I might have overset them down.
You should.
I'll be first minute, I didn't look at it, we should be five-star now, it's brand new. Yeah, we were, good deal.
Great. Good, we passed. Okay, the EDC director, Jamie Wells.
Good morning, counsel.
Morning.
James Wells with the Carroll County Economic Development Corporation. I just wanted to take a few minutes to share a brief update on where we stand as a county in terms of economic and community development. I hope in your packet they got a copy, um, of our Carroll County annual update as we head into the third year of our contract. Overall, Carroll County continues to move in the right direction, we're growing steadily, building partnerships, and focusing on the kinds of investments that improve everyday life for our residents. Over the past few years, we've seen our population rise slightly, wages go up nearly 30% since 2019, and unemployment hold steady around 3.6%. That tells us our local economy is stable, our workforce is active, and our employers are continuing to invest here. On the infrastructure and broadband front, we've been working with multiple providers to make sure every resident and business has reliable, high-speed internet. The Miami Cass R E M C's fiber network now covers more than 400 miles of, across the county, and their goal is to finish the final connections by the end of next year. We've also made strong progress on the business and industrial development side. The Andersons Incorporated is building a new distribution, has built, is building a new distribution center at the Hoosier Heartland Industrial Park, uh, which will be operational by the end of this year. The construction is also underway, or has been, let me already, um, get back to my update here. On the new 50,000 square foot shell building, uh, which you can see, um, down there, um, off of Highway 39, thank you, I'm getting, I'm, as more and more meetings, I'm getting uh, the roads down here in the county. Now, housing continues to take, be a key priority. The interurban apartments in Delphi built through the state's ready program are now fully leased. That development is providing 68 units of workforce housing in downtown Delphi. We've also helped advance infrastructure for new subdivisions like the Bowin Estates in Delphi and Carriage Estates in Flora, and we're supporting new projects like the White Oaks to grow our tourism and recreational opportunities. Now, childcare access is another important piece of our county's growth. The Children's Garden Childcare Center is nearing, is, has been completed with the support from the Lilly Endowment and Ready 2.0, bringing with it 68 new childcare seats. That's in addition to the work of the Early Learning Alliance, which continues to support local childcare providers and early learning initiatives. We are also making progress in other areas that strengthen our community through our partnership with KIRPSY, that is the Kankakee-Iroquois Regional Planning Commission. We're expanding the local agricultural economy, supporting, by, by supporting cold storage, meat processing, and commercial kitchen upgrades to help farmers and small food producers grow. We're also working with Purdue and Enterprise Vanpool to improve worker transportation, including new routes to major employers like Indiana Packers. Finally, we continue to invest in leadership and planning. The Leadership Carroll County Program is training our next generation of civic and business leaders, and we're developing a new five-year strategic plan that will guide where we focus our efforts moving forward. And I believe that, uh, the next cohort for Leadership Carroll County is getting ready for the two, 2026 to 2027, uh, session. In short, Carroll County growth is steady, our partnerships are strong, and the momentum we've built is setting us up for even greater success in the years ahead. So, counsel, thank you for your time and for your continued support for the work we're doing to move Carroll County forward.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. President, or counsel?
No, do you have any questions?
Nope.
We have none.
All right, thank you for your time, counsel.
Thanks.
Good morning.
Okay, additionals? Any question on these additionals to be advertised?
Kristen, is it 30,000 to cover, um, autopsies that you have bills coming due, or you think you're gonna have coming due? I have bills right now of $15,000, and I have to get the rest of the last year to end of the year. So right now, you just need $15,000? No, I just, pardon. To pay the bills? 15,000, we need to zero. Does she need 30,000 to pay all the bills, or just 15,000? I need 30,000 right now, that will hopefully make it to the end of the year, it's not that hard. She just said she had 15,000 in bills, and that she needs some more to go to the end of the year. So you have more bills coming after the 15,000? Yeah, I'm sure the debt won't stop. Any debts from here on out, I have no money to, none. I just don't wanna do an additional for 30,000, and then she doesn't use, she pays her bills of 15,000, and then say we only need 10,000, and then there's 20,000 sitting up there that she really didn't need to do additional on, we can do another additional. We can't, it takes two months, we're at, we're, we're into November. If she finds out she needs more, I mean, we would need to know right away to get it on your November, and your December. I'm at, I'll be at zero right now, and I, it's the only kind of bill to pay right now, that we just did an autopsy yesterday. Above the 15,000? Yes, like, my debts aren't gonna stop. Okay.
That's not, I don't think that's what Tracy's saying.
That's not what I'm saying, Kristen. We'll use the money, and I, I'm, for one, two.
Are you picking her up?
She was asking, like, what's your bill currently that you owe?
Could you come up, ma'am?
Yeah.
Would you mind going to the mic?
Sorry, because we're, because we're streaming, it needs to be on the mic. Sorry, Kristen.
I have 15,000 dollars in bills right now. That's nothing coming forward. Okay.
I got you.
And that's autopsies and toxicologies. There's no way I won't need more money. I mean, I, I need the money. We're doing one to two a week. Sometimes three. You can come with me.
See?
Sure.
It reverts back, if, if we don't use it.
Thank you, it does.
Happens to it.
If she doesn't use it, it stays in her, in the county general. Right. I mean, it could reverse back.
Motion to approve 30,000.
Thank you, Brady.
I second.
Thank you.
Okay, you got a motion and a second. Is that, is that for, uh, everything?
30,000.
No, 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 no. Just, just for the corner.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Cody, come up.
I have a question, I, I don't see it on here, on September 26th, I turned in an additional for overtime, excuse me, overtime and postage, and I don't.
Don't see it anywhere on here.
Where is he? On page?
How much was it for?
6,000 for overtime for deputies, and 1,600 for postage.
Of course, we're gonna ask the question we always ask, you don't have anywhere to transfer.
Do what?
We're gonna ask the question we always have to ask is, you don't, you don't have anywhere to transfer it from, correct?
No.
Okay. I knew the answer, but.
But I don't, I don't know if that was advertised already, or, 26th of September.
He's saying he asked for something to be listed in the additional, it should have been.
Okay.
How much was the additional for?
6,000 and 1,600. Six thousand and sixteen hundred.
So, so we can add it.
I can reforward you the email.
We haven't, we haven't seen him, Sheriff, so.
So, the jail to grinder, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
That's, that's unrelated. Oh, yeah, while you're up there.
We've kind of already discussed, it's just asking fixed, right?
Right.
The jail grinder?
You gotta.
Not fixed, there is none. There is no grinder.
Right.
So, you got a bit of one twenty roughly, or?
It's a little, just a little high for a little bit of a cushion, but, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Are we thinking county general for that?
That was gonna be my question.
Q and cap, you think?
Okay.
That's what I would think.
Yeah, that'd be fine.
I don't know.
Well, let's stay here with this one.
It says capital outweigh on here. The estimate.
So, we're saying.
Can we, so we want to make the adjustment to advertise the jail grinder out, instead of county general, to do it out of Q and cap?
Good.
That's my, yeah.
So, we'll have to add, we will have, we'll have to re-advertise it? Okay.
But on the other hand.
Do we need, do we need a motion?
Commissioners already approved. I'm trying to figure out how to get this in there. Because it's gonna be winter, and I don't know whether they can install.
I hope so. It's, it's an everyday, ongoing problem, so.
Are we allowed to make this adjustment right now, without being advertised there?
No, but I'm.
What?
No, no, say, say what you're gonna say.
I said, I need to talk to the commissioners, because they approved me to advertise this out of county general. So, I mean, if I can ask them about the Q and cap, and you know that they'll probably agree to that, are you guys in agreeance of, like a?
Yeah.
No, we, I think we are in agreeance, we just wish, we just don't want it to come out of county general, we want it to come out of.
So, if they.
What I'm saying is, can he get it installed, and then we, I know this is not the tradition to do, or not supposed to do, but can he get it ordered? Ready to go?
Yeah.
So, you would need us to approve as is, and then we make the adjustment after?
Or, in your motion, say, or Q and cap for commissioners, or something?
Sure. You can do alternative.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the jail grinder for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, an additional out of county general or Q and cap.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then when it comes up, you gotta decide how to allocate.
Officials recorder, two thousand. Recorder here.
I asked for an additional, because we're gonna have bills come in, and then the education fund.
You don't have anywhere to transfer, transfer from?
Nope.
Okay, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion sec, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, operating expenses, Carol Mann, or what's that about Beth?
That's out of her donation line, getting up into the operating expenses, so she can use it, because right now she's out of county commissioner money. And she's, I will not pay anything out of forty-nine hundred, except for her payroll.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Sherry seconded, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Passes seven zero. Q and cap, old jail renovation, a hundred and forty-nine thousand. Now, that's also.
Either or.
Either or edit.
Motion to approve Q and cap or edit funds for the old jail renovation for her.
Whoa, whoa, we're choosing right now.
Oh, we have to choose now?
Yeah. We advertise for both, so we can choose.
They really wanted to take it out of edit, but decided to put it under Q and cap too.
Yeah, I don't think it should be out of edit, I don't know about you guys.
Why don't you think it should be out of edit?
It's not economic development, though.
I mean, we're making an old structure usable.
For what?
For the nine, nine-one-one offices.
It's like public service to me, not economic development, but that's semantics.
That money can be used for anything, any purpose. I just want to throw that out, because a lot of people do think, it, long time ago, it was just used as sewers, or something like that.
Yeah, it was very restricted at one time, now it's very open.
What is, what is the, what's the current balance?
And we're getting six hundred and some thousand?
Six hundred thousand.
I'm sorry, I, I just can't whip it off the top of my head.
Probably six hundred and seventy-two.
We will be getting over six hundred thousand for twenty-six. We get that monthly, there's probably, I'm gonna guess, probably a million dollars in there now.
If there's no issue, then I will make a motion that we approve a hundred and forty thousand, a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars for the old jail renovation out of edit funds.
Second?
I'll second.
Tony, second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Passes seven zero. What's this?
What?
I didn't know whether she was voting or not, I just.
Oh, I said, yeah.
She voted. ARPA interest, dog kennel.
Okay, that's mine, and that is a, a problem that we came across. When it was approved the last time, it was eleven thousand something on it, on the invoice. There were other things on there, but it wasn't the total amount, it was a team up to four thousand, we put in. I think it's electric, yeah, electric, and the kennel, and that was already, a lot of people thought it was already due, so I.
So, on the original, when I came for the ARPA meeting before you guys.
Here, come up here, Tony, please.
You gotta be recording all the time, mister.
I'm always recording.
Anyway, when I came before you guys during the ARPA last year, I think. We had a, a quote for the building. And on that quote separately, that we, that I'm ninety-nine percent sure we discussed, was the amount to put electric and heat and stuff like that in that. Somehow through the wash, don't know how, but that side stuff was cut off. So, we were only somehow allotted eleven thousand, it should have been more, like fifteen thousand. So, Beth came up with taking it out of the ARPA interest.
Interest, and then there's another scenario, he's already paid for that out of his own budget. And then what we're going to do, like we did with the elevator, is pay it back to him, into county general.
Motion to approve ARPA interest, dog kennel, four thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion seconded and made, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Passes seven zero. The four-H fairgrounds bathroom in Flora, you know, there's been some question about whether, we want to make sure we own that land, for sure. I had some people call me about that and said that, that they didn't think that we owned that land, so before we approved this, I would want to make sure that we, we for sure own that land, and so we could address.
I know there's been discussion on both, and I think last evening, Marion is here, and so is the four-H, I'm gonna let them know.
Come on up.
So, the county only owns the exhibit hall, the land around the exhibit hall. And technically speaking, you don't own all of the land under the exhibit hall, due to a snafu of getting the legal description when that was, that extent, that expansion was done. I'm in the process of fixing that. But the four-H buildings, you own the buildings, the town owns the land, and that's how it's always been. If you, I can give you a history of how the county owns the four-H building land and nothing else, if you care, but that's, that, that's how it is.
So, this town of Flora owns the grounds, and county owns the buildings?
Correct.
Okay, so at one of the meetings, it was the opposite.
I, not a meeting where I was at.
Okay. Go ahead, yeah, if you wanna.
We've been trying to figure it out, too, and looked, we've actually been, was it the, what offices have we been to? Assessor and.
Recorder's.
Recorder's office. And we found some old maps, and, because was you on that email that was sent, was it Beth that sent that out? Were they?
With that, I, I sent it from.
Because it was the commissioners that was on it, and the other county?
I sent it to you.
Are you in agreement with what she says?
No, unfortunately, because it, it looks like there, there's a strip that is part of the show arena, and up into the middle of the cattle barn, that was deeded to the county. And from the Flora Community Club, and, yes. And then part of the, the other side of the community fairground, or the cattle barn, is owned by the county. And it's, it's, there's some overlapping mess, so we sent that information back in that email, so.
So, our only concern right now is, we want to know who owns the bathrooms?
Exactly, because that's what Gretchen replied to that.
So, who do you think owns the bathrooms?
It's in that section that we think is in a deed that is, that was leased, that is now expired.
Which way?
It was expired.
I'm sorry.
You gotta ask some clarification.
Yeah.
I, I think the group.
Are we building a bathroom?
The town, the county, and the.
Are you, are we building a bathroom? Yeah.
Okay, there's current, there's current bathrooms right now that need.
Demolished.
Demolished and redone.
On the same spot?
Yes, they're terrible.
No bigger footprint.
So, I'm not comfortable advertising this with this amount of money, I'd like to remove it.
Okay.
So, is this going to be, like, surveyed, or what's the plan?
There is an old survey.
We're just the finances.
Ninety-six, ninety-six, we found that map in our office.
Do we need a motion to table it?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, please, for the record, be a good idea.
I'll make a motion that we table the edit and rainy day fund request for a hundred and forty thousand dollars for the four-H grounds bathrooms.
That's all, though? All, all those in favor of the motion to table it, raise your hand.
Aye.
Seven zero, passes.
So, so I guess my question is, is then how do we get these three groups together to?
And ask them what they want to do?
Okay.
And we want the documents.
Okay.
And we should probably get the town of Flora into this conversation?
Yes.
Absolutely, I agree.
Because it sounds like on one of these documents, one part of the county that owns, actually owns part of the baseball field. So, it, it almost leads to be like.
Okay, we can't.
We just need to swamp.
We gotta stay in our meeting, so, thank you, Beth.
We might have another land swap, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Okay, that's everything. Additionals to be advertised by consensus?
And I will put that on for the sheriff on here.
Two, two, Rick.
Okay.
And before we close our meeting, do we need to discuss the budget changes now?
You can't close your meeting until you adopt your budget.
Correct, so now we need to go back and discuss our budgets, and, Michael, guys, hands up.
Before you guys get into that, there is, I don't know what happened to a transfer sheet that I turned in, that was supposed to be ten thousand dollars from ID Networks to equipment. It was turned in like two and a half weeks ago.
Okay.
Brooke, can you do that again?
I just, I'm not accusing you, I just don't know what happened to it. From ID Networks to equipment.
Cost?
It's to transfer to, out of the twenty-six, ten grand.
Motion to approve.
Second.
ID Network to equipment, ten thousand dollars.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
All right, so I say we visit back to the budget, and start off with the very first one. Which is Circuit Court, and Shane judged that one.
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand. Circuit Court?
Okay. On the three Circuit Court lines, if those hourly figures that he gave us are correct, his presented is correct. So, four-nine, eight-nine-nine on Chief Court Reporter.
Okay.
Just a second.
Yep. Let them get it pulled up. Which budget are we in? So, page twenty-one?
I think twenty, twenty-one? Twenty-two, what I got, I thought. Four-nine, eight, eight, nine. You're wrong, though. Going Court, he said Superior, or Circuit Court. Deputy Court, I have is four-four, two-seven-three.
Two-seven-three.
And then, wait, wait for Jackie.
Okay, there are three of those, right? Or we just in that one court?
Just in that one court.
Okay. And then we down and switch it to Circuit Court? And then we have another one, Superior, four, that's two. Okay. And they're all four-four, two-seven-three.
Yeah, do I need to take?
There's four of them. There's two in the Superior Court.
Do you need the times two number, or are you good?
No, I've got it.
So, bailiff now?
Circuit.
Circuit Court, so.
And going courts work for the deputy court before, what is the start of it?
I calculated off of the number Shane gave, so twenty-three, sixty-five.
And twenty-two.
Bailiff, is there just one?
Yes.
Four-two, two-five-one. Bailiff is four-two, two-five-one.
That's on page twenty-two.
Two-five-one.
Yeah, because four deputy court reporters and one bailiff, so far, okay.
And then just confirming, we had that thousand dollars, did we?
Yeah, we're gonna do that.
And then, yeah, Jackie, we had the thousand dollars in office machines, okay.
And we also had the chief probation officer.
Yeah, we did that one.
She needs.
We've got a list to make change.
Yeah.
Chief probation officer, what was that amount?
Eighty-five, three thirteen.
Which court was the machines changed to?
Circuit.
Circuit.
Circuit, yeah.
Second deputy probation officer, did we change that, or we? You can have, you said keep those at two percent?
No, we're don't, are you going in Hawkins now?
We're not there yet.
We're not there yet.
We just, we did, you know, but you did chief probation officer.
All right, now where are we at?
Judge Hawkins, chief probation, needs reduced amount to deputy probation.
Chief probation.
No, not, it's reduced percentage, not reduced, same number, yeah.
Reduced percentage.
Reduced.
One got two percent, one got three percent or something.
Hey, so the difference was two and five, or something?
Okay, so you want to two percent?
Is this in Superior Court?
This is Joint Courts.
Okay.
Joint, joint, yep.
Jackie, what's your new number?
One, we stated when he was to here was eighty-five thousand, three thirteen for the Chief probation officer.
So.
Changed to Second Deputy probation officer.
So, hey, when, for this position here, somehow it got calculated at five percent.
Right.
So.
So we're changing the Chief probation officer to eight-five-three-one-three?
Yeah. Yep, and that's reduced by a couple thousand.
So that's three percent, right?
That's three percent, yeah. And the second. Eight-five-three-one-three.
The Deputy probation officer, is that the other one he's talking about?
There's a first and a second.
And he wants, what was wrong with those?
He said they were figured at two percent.
Well, they, the only one that was incorrect, from what I saw, was the, um, the one that we just corrected.
Yeah, he was just.
Everything was actually correct.
He was okay with the other two.
Yep, they were, they were calculated at three percent, this one somehow was missed and.
Yes.
Probably me, so.
Can you double check that that Deputy probation officer was calculated right real quick?
Confirm which, where we're at.
Which one?
You want the second deputy?
Second deputy.
There checking about.
What's the hourly rate? What's the hourly rate? Can we start from beginning?
Start from.
But there's, I, there's a set by state. You're giving, you're giving above.
If that's the second deputy, if that's right. We're in the second deputy?
Is this number of four, four-seven, the state statute?
Five, four-eight, right?
We never saw the paper that said what the state.
Is it the four-five?
But that first deputy. First Deputy probation officer, I wonder how we could have done a percentage if we didn't know what.
Again, he's not asking for an adjustment.
Is that wrong? For second deputy?
Is it probation? Second deputy what?
Second, yeah, probation, yeah. I got four-five, five, four-eight, is that what we're talking about?
Are you down with those courts?
Hold on, we, we might have one. Hold on here, so, so the second deputy on the twenty-twenty-five amended budget, it says forty-five-five-four-eight. That's, that's what they're saying that is, and so if you, and that's not what he has on the paper right there. Or not, or.
So what, uh, for the second Deputy probation officer, what do you have listed now?
Forty-six, four, four-seven.
Okay, I think that we might need to revisit that, I think it might need to be forty-six-nine-one-five, so we need to double check that one.
Cause I'm at twenty-nine now, or I'm not coming out with what they're saying either.
Let's double check that one then.
Yep.
What, can you tell me the hourly?
Twenty dollars, ninety cents.
Twenty-eighty?
Twenty-ninety.
Twenty-ninety, and then they work thirty-six hours.
I'm coming out with thirty-nine-one-twenty-five.
How many hours do we?
Thirty-six times fifty-two.
But they get longevity, they have longevity that, that gets filtered into theirs. The state says, yeah, the state has a base pay and then they get longevity and then they get so much for being Chief probation officer, so that's why.
So what do you think the best way to?
I, I mean, I don't know, I mean, ask him what he thought it should be. I, I'm like you, I thought he said five and two, but.
But we had not seen the paper this year.
We didn't get one this year because they said they didn't get any raises.
They didn't get a raise, so that's why I'm, I'm a proud, they asked for fifty-three, so.
So why wouldn't you pay out, aren't we, we pay out the salary ordinance? So I guess I'm confused of why we're not using that amount. I mean, that's what they get paid in their paycheck, so why wouldn't you use a salary ordinance amount to figure?
Because he asked for more money than what we did have, I mean, that's where I'm confused.
I mean, I'm figuring twenty-ninety-three percent raise for both of them and I mean, I guess I'm confused with what the hassle was.
Your first Deputy probation officer's making seventy-two-one-seventy-one.
How mu, what'd you say?
I think you need to ask for.
Seventy-two-one-seventy-one down here.
Oh, yeah, seventy-two, seventy.
Their, their sheet that says how much it should be and find out what their longevity is, cause they get different longivities for the amount of time they've been there. And then they get different amounts put in it for the position that they hold.
Do we need to have the judge or Hawkins come back?
Just to be sure.
Yeah.
So, so this, whatever's in this book isn't right in any way.
That line.
Our math ain't maffin'.
But longevity.
Well, it doesn't match his, it doesn't match theirs, it doesn't match her. I don't even give them the right number to figure. Like he, he said, what is it?
It would have, because that's what we do is, we would just put it in there.
Cause it's not county money? The difference is state money?
No, it's all, it's all county.
Okay, it comes through this, it's set by the state, so it ought to be accurate.
She cuts that paycheck, it's twenty dollars and ninety cents.
Okay, hold on, guys.
It depends on how long they've been there, a minimum probation officer for twenty-twenty-six, zero year experience is forty-two thousand, three-eleven. Then they go, it, it graduates up, then a Chief probation officer who's been the chief for different segments of year goes from five thousand to fifteen thousand. The Assistant Chief, which I would presume would be the same as the Chief Deputy, gets five thousand and ten thousand. And then a Supervisor probation officer, after so long, gets five thousand. So it, it's all based on this, that's how they're paid. And we used to get this, but since they didn't get a raise, I'm guessing they didn't bring it down. And so the county is giving a raise above and beyond what you said.
State can give more.
I know, but you can pay them extra is what they've always said.
Yeah, you can, you can put the increase on there.
But do we want to?
I'm back to what Maureen Brady, me and Brady said. The salary ordinance, what they're getting paid is not what's on these numbers.
This is what you have to pay, or they'll come out, they'll come out, I guarantee you.
Oh, there he is, come up. Judge.
We can give them three percent if we want.
Welcome. Hi, how are you?
First and second deputy.
First Deputy probation officer, they're set by this minimum salary.
So I'm, I, I guess since I've been here on the council now, I've missed all these conversations about how this works, but. I mean, I'm going off of the, they get twenty dollars and ninety cents an hour and that's how I'm calculating annual and that's what we normally put in the line. Jackie is saying that it's state set and.
For the minimum. The mi, state, right.
So we're, well, we're above the minimums then?
We are not. For a probation officer?
So I think the specific question we need to know.
First Deputy probation officer, let's use that one.
So that's Karen Brophy. She is at, uh, do you have the?
I do have this.
She.
And I have the salary ordinance, so I'd like to compare.
So she's in the fifteen to nineteen, I think she's at nineteen, but I, I'd have to check, I'm sorry, I can't tell you the exact year. But seven, she would fall in the seventy-seven-five-five, which is what's allocated for her last year.
Cause it is, that will stay the same for this year, the state minimum.
Now, this is the twenty-six one.
Right.
So we have seventy-two-one-seventy-one, which was higher than the minimum.
Which he was, you weren't asking, you weren't asking for an adjustment on that, were you?
I what, I was, we asked for the same raise for everybody because they're, they're, they did not get one this year, they likely will not get one next year. They're lumped in the same category with, the state minimum probably will not pump, but who knows whether it will or not.
Oh.
Beth, can you give me that number again?
Seventy-two-eight, seventy-eight is what a two percent raise on that commodity, seventy-two-eight-seventy-eight.
Which is what?
Which is the, which is the seventy thousand, seven fifty-five times the three percent county is considering.
I thought you said they was figured at two percent.
The spreadsheet that I had, that Judge Evans prepared, that I shared with you, I think says five, two and two. I don't know. Jackie? Where those numbers came from, I'm sorry, I don't. So are we saying that the state is saying the minimum is seven-seven-five-five-zero? Seven-zero.
We did calculate it at two percent. That one is calculated at two percent.
So how can we be below the minimum?
Do you know what the?
Below the minimum.
What's the minimum? Seven-zero-seven-seven, seven-zero-seven-five-five is the minimum.
So we are the.
Okay.
Okay, so seven-zero-seven-five-five is the minimum, what's last year's total?
That's what they got paid in twenty-five.
Okay, so are we given three percent, do you want me to calculate that?
Yes.
Yes.
Three percent on, okay. Which would be seven-two-eight-seven-eight. Okay, so that's confirmed, seven-two-eight-seven-eight.
You just did.
Yep, seven-two-eight-seven-eight.
And that's for the first Deputy probation officer.
Correct. So Deputy probation officer two was, the s, the reason that's low is because the person that we hired to fill that spot had zero years of experience.
Okay, so what's the state minimum?
For that one is forty-five-five-four-eight.
So that one also would just get three percent.
And we're, yeah, and right now is. Can you tell me? Hard to find somebody for anything.
Forty-five-five-four-eight.
And that is confirmed, four-five-five-four-eight for last year?
Yeah, and I had that at something.
That's forty-six-nine-one-five.
Forty-six-one-nine, yep.
Nine-one-five.
Nine-four-five, yep.
And just to double check. Probation officer is going to eighty-five-three-one-three, that's one over five.
Listen, you don't round like that, okay?
Second deputy is forty-six-nine-one-five.
We're actually moving court, right?
Yep.
I think we're penny off.
And just to confirm, the first deputy was sent to the date seventy-eight.
Yes.
And first deputy is listed in, where?
They're, they're all in the, the Joint Courts.
Joint Courts?
Yep.
Now, I will tell you that one of these, and I think Karen.
Why are you there?
Karen Brophy.
Last year, we took it out to different times.
We did.
But it didn't all come out of county general.
Because it was in adult supplemental and now, but we moved the secretary over there, cause there was enough money to cover that one, but not enough to cover what we were taking out for.
Okay.
Just the, just for information.
Okay.
So we've, we've been moving things around to, to deplete that fund from revenue, uh, that they receive from fees, et cetera.
Okay, so those three adjustments take care of your issue.
Yes, sir.
Okay, anything else for the judge?
Nope.
Nope.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, guys.
I want to confirm to Chief Court Reporters, forty-nine-eight-eight-nine, so when you go pick it.
What?
Forty-nine-eight-eight-nine.
In what?
Yes, okay.
Yep.
And then the Deputy Court Reporters, and you have, how many court reporters you have?
Two, three.
Thirty-nine.
Four.
Four, two and Superior, correct.
Four court reporters.
Yep.
What did you have, I'm sorry?
Deputy.
Four-four-two-seven-three for the Deputy Court Reporters.
One more time.
Thank you. Four-four-two-seven-three.
What was their rate last year?
Seven-three.
Uh, forty, but after that was forty-two-one-six.
Where you at now?
Um, Deputy Court Reporter, Joint Courts.
Joint.
And the bailiff was four-two-two-five-one, and Circuit?
What was the bailiff?
I have four-two-two-five-one.
Yep.
Jackie, you good?
Which one were you guys talking?
Thank you.
Sorry, you guys are jumping some fast, I can't stay with you.
Circuit?
Circuit Court?
Circuit Court now.
Bailiff was four-two-two-five-one.
Oh, yeah, I already got that, okay, I'm sorry, I, I was there and didn't know it. Yep. Sorry. I was over here dreaming of sunny days and beaches.
What's next, Tracy? Yeah.
Yep, alright, we're gonna go to, uh, Highway.
Let's do it.
And bigger man, remember it right now.
After we get done with everything, you're gonna have a, a budget thing to sign.
Who page is that on?
All of these for you guys to sign and pass them around, because.
It's your fault, for sure.
Do we need to sign the salary ordinance as well?
Yeah.
So this is what I asked Paul earlier, if, if he's eliminating positions.
Right.
Why don't we just approve the same budget lines and then fix this in the salary ordinance?
Pay this highway off? Haven't found it yet.
Cause then it, to me, it holds him accountable a little bit to make it work, what fits his department the best.
Well, it just lowers his budget, so he doesn't have that extra money to spend. If you leave it saying he still has that money to use for employees. I mean, I'm good with.
Except you're gonna say on salary ordinance, how many employees he can have, so he can't have more than that new.
Well, it's, I don't know the best way to do it.
Obviously, you wanna come back up real quick?
Well, I also have something to add, if he's, if he's losing those employees and he wants those for winter, maybe he should have been, we should have been what we've got now.
I mean, he, it's, it's an employee that does not have a CDL and it's an employee that, the job description is assigned, it's not a driving. Yeah, I'm good with just just the salary one if I'm his.
Okay, are you, you feel good about this and feel like you can get everything plowed that needs plowed?
I, I think so, if we can make this change, instead twenty-seven, having twenty-five employees in the scale range that we discussed, I think.
The only other thing I would like to see is, is the mechanic, the number really embedded in the head, I mean, what number could we get a mechanic? I mean, I know, we're talking probably.
My, my son works as a diesel mechanic for, he's done it for Ryder and a couple other places, so he's, he's not quite certified, but he's a large mechanic and he makes, uh, twenty-five dollars an hour. So I don't, I mean, I, that's just, just, I called him because I don't wanna know what he made and, and he's fairly experienced and he's pretty good at what he does.
When we send stuff off, we, we pay around two to two-eighty an hour to get it worked on.
Yeah, and that's when we send it off.
Twenty-six, you can get a mechanic, or should we boost that up a little bit to try to get a mechanic? Even though we're gonna spend a little more in payroll on that, look at the hundred thousand just gonna say. Is what I want, is to look at.
I think we should bump it up a little.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that would sure, it wouldn't hurt, I mean, it could help you get a mechanic.
No, if we can get a good.
Certified?
So, yeah, I was about to say certified mechanic, it's gonna cost quite a bit, I mean, in my opinion, it's gonna cost over thirty dollars an hour, but that's just.
The field operation or foremans, which he said are extremely important, they're getting twenty-six, so should a mechanic that's working on all the vehicles and the trucks and that get more than the foremans? Or what's every big deal?
If he's not certified, I mean, sort of, you know, just. If he's not certified, I mean, sort of, you know, just, uh, that's, you know, I know a lot of uncertified mechanics. I mean, you can get a decent one like that, but like he's saying, if you're gonna get somebody with the paperwork, it'll, now, now you're talking thirties.
We, we, I mean, we could see who we recruit.
Yeah, you might find somebody just wanting to.
If we, or, or we could say if they're a certified mechanic, you know, are we gonna give him thirty bucks an hour or something?
So what?
Set two pay scales.
Yeah, range pay.
The what?
Okay, so we, we can visit that in the salary ordinance also. I just wanted to bring that up here. I wanna talk about maintenance mechanic.
Yeah.
Yeah, because right now we only have one guy in the shop, um, and he was one of the ones ready to leave because he's an older gentleman. I mean, he's seventy-two years old. He can't, he can't pull the radiators and motors like he used to and stuff, and it's just him in the shop and myself. I help him out in the shop when I can. So getting someone in there to help him is gonna be.
I, I like the idea that they've been the diesel mechanics who are not that they get.
I.
That's why they go, they get more money.
To fix that right now?
No, we can do it over the salary ordinance.
I think we have to consider the consequences of doing that, too. I, I, I'm not saying I'm against it, but there's some, there'll be some consequences for us doing that. So.
You mean what?
Well, like, I mean, I can tell you, like Sheriff's Department, they go get certifications to be specialty officers and they're not getting anything.
And that's what I want. Yeah, they, yeah, they will.
So.
Their pay range that we're gonna do for them. That's why we're changing their pay range, because when they're, when they go to the training and classes and that stuff, they'll get the higher rate.
And then I'm, I'm not saying I'm opposed to this, but like, I know, I know my departments very well and I know some of them are required to have degrees. And now there's people that don't even have degrees that are gonna be making four to five dollars an hour more than.
Well, that's why I think we should do the, the, the certified, I don't know what you call it, diesel mechanic.
Yeah, whatever you're certified in, yeah.
Because we do that for the surveyor also, if he is certified surveyor and not certified.
Yeah. Right.
And then I also discussed with Paul and Hunter about, you know, we need to look at the other wages of our officers, emergency, and, and everyone else, because we don't want, we don't want a C D L driver making more than a cop.
And well, and the other option, which I don't know if it's an option, but I know, like with our company, we, we got rid of all of our mechanics. We don't have a mechanic on the whole spot anymore. Everything's farmed out.
For two-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars an hour.
Well, not that, no.
I mean, that's not an answer, right?
Hold on. Pump the brakes, Paul. What I'm saying is, is they, we don't own the equipment. We don't own any of it. We, we pretty much lease it, and so in the end, it actually, we save money and we were paying the same wages he's paying. I'm not saying we should do that. I'm just saying, maybe we don't own the equipment. If there's an option to lease all the equipment, then, then you get that where we need to change out trucks. They change out all our loaders, all our equipment, all our.
Don't shock, we looked into that.
We just bought a ton of trucks.
Oh, I'm not saying, I'm, yeah, in.
Remember Donnie came and he's like, you know, I, I thought this was.
Yeah.
And then the, the other question I would have is, like, we identified certain areas that is very far behind other counties. And my question is, is, is the highway significantly further behind than specifically the sheriff's officers and paramedics, the E M S?
And that's what we'll look at once, once she gets the new numbers for the salary ordinance twenty-twenty-six, then you go through and you can evaluate.
Yeah, but the.
She'll wanna change it before that.
But the budgets won't match that. You know what I'm saying?
That was my thing, but they're saying it's no big deal. Put the budget through.
Budget doesn't have to match line by line. It has to have, budget is the authority to spend.
Yeah.
And then, and then the salary ordinance sets.
Yeah, but if, if we set our budget at a twenty-five dollar an hour rate and then we go pay them thirty dollars an hour, they'll be coming back in October.
Transfer money or do an additional.
Yeah.
Right, the line item runs out in October.
That's if we find somebody.
He's never been fully staffed is the thing.
Yeah, and, and I agree. All I'm saying is, is like, he's saying people are leaving. And I'm saying for like Sheriff's Department specifically, they've already left. They went to Delphi. So what, where are we going to? What departments do we do this with? Because if we approve this, Tony's gonna be up here.
The sheriff already came. We've already done this for them.
What do you mean?
Before, the year before you guys came on that, they came. And they got there, that's what he asked for, and that's, we raised them. We raised E M S, we raised nine-one-one, we raised the officers, and we have already done this with their office, with their, you weren't, yeah.
And we're fully staffed as a sheriff's department, right?
I don't think so. No.
I think we are.
Well, he has approval.
Yeah.
We have proven.
He has approval to be fully staffed.
We've proven that even with nine-one-one, with Mike sitting there, he wanted raises for his people. He restructured his department. It doesn't matter. They still don't stay. I mean, you can give somebody a ten dollar hour raise. It's not gonna guarantee they're gonna stay. We're not guaranteeing him, hey, this money, you're gonna have people, you're gonna fill your positions. Ton, I mean, Tony will tell you. If, if they, if they wanna leave, they're gonna leave.
Yeah.
There is no job people are just gonna stay at because they just want, I mean, some of those guys out there, he said, they like being a Carroll County cop.
Yeah.
And they will stay. But you can't, I mean, you, we could give them ten dollars an hour and they might still walk. So, but I know, I've heard for, well, since Donnie was in it. I mean, we just have been lucky and have really good winters, the last two, three winters. And we haven't had, I mean, I can't amount, I mean, and the reason I'm high on this is because there was a school bus that got in an accident because the road wasn't plowed and the guy died. So, I mean, that sticks in my mind to where one time that happens, and that is, I just feel like that's on me. I need to do something to do for, for the community, our constituents, that we keep your roads graded, we keep your roads clear, keep them open for the animals.
So my, my suggestion is we do a deep dive next year and we don't do a county-wide raise. We do department by department and get them where we want to do.
We say that.
Because that's the.
We say that every year.
Say it every year.
Yeah.
And they call a victim to.
Brady, we are so far closer than we are from three years ago. It's amazing.
Yeah.
I mean, and I'm gonna redo my county-to-county reevaluation now that everybody's got their budgets done in their twenties, so twenty-twenty-six. I'll go through and I'll update all the numbers in that, and then I'm gonna email them out to everybody, because we're not that far. We're, we're very, we're above some of Jay and Fulton County. So.
So let's move forward with this restructuring, slight restructure of the highway department, and let's, let's, you wanna set two pay ranges for, if they're certified and if they're not certified for a mechanic, and see if you can get somebody in there?
Does everybody wanna do it now and make the budget match, or do we wanna wait and do it through the salary ordinance?
I think we can do it through the salary ordinance.
Yeah, I think so.
Jackie and Beth, are we okay to do it through the salary ordinance?
I think so. I mean, just because you put it in there doesn't mean you gotta hire them right away. You might have, you know, a little way, way.
And obviously, you know how it looks if six months from now you come back in and say, I need four more drivers.
Yeah, it's not happening. Yeah.
I mean, obviously, that's a slippery slope. We can't go down.
Yeah, no, I totally understand that.
And it puts a lot more responsibility on the department as to who you pay what.
Yes, yes.
If you have non-experienced, non-C D L coming in, you're not gonna give them that higher rate. That's common sense.
Yep, yep, totally understand.
Is everybody else okay with just doing it on the salary ordinance?
Yeah.
Yep.
So I'm good to move on with the pay scale now? All right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
For next year, right?
For next year, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
For next year.
Good clarification.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Yep.
Um, next on the list is clerk, um, her position pay, um, what's comparable to the judges, because cases, because cases all get filed through her. And the C C E B meetings need seven hundred, and the election needs sixteen thousand. I don't know, that's the election.
I was gonna say, it's your election board, yeah.
So the second line.
So it's page thirteen?
Zero, three would go to sixteen thousand.
Are you there, Jackie?
Jackie, what page do you have that listed as?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
So the second.
Twelve thousand, so sixteen thousand.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And then the C C E B meeting, seven hundred.
Yeah, the C C E B meetings, instead of six hundred, back to seven hundred.
Yep.
Jackie, you got that?
Yes, I did. Thank you.
Okay.
And then as to Sharon's pay or the folks' pay on that, I was here when that all went down and I did not vote for that to happen. So I think when we are visiting the salary ordinance and that and comparing that to where she should probably be. I don't have a problem looking at how they do.
Good. Now, that should be changed now, uh, just.
Yeah, let's change it now, though.
If you're gonna increase it, you won't have that.
Should I, that back on one?
Yes.
Yeah, it's page one.
So this is from my last year comparison, not this year's numbers. And the clerk was at fifty-one, two, forty-eight. Fulton was at fifty-seven, seventy-three. Jay was at fifty-nine, six, oh, six. And Cass was at fifty-one, oh, nine, nine.
Fifty-one?
Fifty-one, oh, nine, nine. The auditor was fifty-nine, five, twenty-one. Fulton County, fifty-eight, oh, thirty-two. Jay, sixty-one, two, thirty-nine. Cass, fifty-eight, eight, oh, eighty-six.
Very next page, too. So last year was five, one, two, four, eight.
Get the, the next.
Yes.
Yep.
Five, one, two, four, eight.
Sharon, your calcu, or your, um, your budget request of fifty-eight, four, two, three, what was that based on? Is that a certain percentage or?
Uh, I, for the, the year that it didn't get a raise, I took that year's percentage and then, so it was, it was a rough estimate on what it should have been, if it would have been raised in twenty-twenty-four.
You felt like it caught you up?
It would have caught up, yes. And I will say the counties that she's mentioned, um, Cass County, they have nine employees. I have three. Jay County has six. I have three. And what was your other county? You used Fulton.
Fulton, yeah.
Fulton, Jay, and Cass.
The only problem I have with it is that the treasurer, it, it makes fifty-one, three, twenty-nine, the recorder makes fifty-one, three, twenty-nine, and it's, you know, you start moving one up for the other, then all your other bits.
I can't remember how long ago that was.
That's been about four or five years ago. The council made a decision to, instead of all of them being the same, they raised the auditor up. What was it, like, three thousand or, or two or fifteen?
Like fifteen hundred, I think, was maybe, or something like that.
What does, what's the treasurer make currently?
Treasurer.
With the increase? Fifty-two, three, five, six.
Fifty-one, three, twenty-nine. What's your three percent? That's what I mean. If you, if you bump her on that, she's gonna be making more than the treasurer, the recorder.
And that's what they've gone back on then, yeah, right?
You're not gonna hear an argument from me. I mean.
I'm just making note of it on camera that I brought it up and that we had, we took it under advisement.
That wasn't intended a few years ago.
So why can't we look at all of those positions?
Well.
I don't see us as looking at changing all those positions.
No.
No.
Those are elected officials. You'd have to look at all the elected officials. The reason we're looking at Sharon's is because of what happened two years ago that I would be the first one to say it was a personal attack.
Do we?
What percent was that?
Do we know what percentage it was?
Yeah.
It was, was it four percent? It was four. I think it was four percent.
Everybody else got four and you got zero.
Correct.
So if we would give her a, a six percent this year instead of a three percent, that would help get her back up there.
That seems.
And that would be, that would be at.
Seven percent.
So that wouldn't be giving them a pay.
I calculated seven.
What it, what's the number?
What's the number for seven?
If, if it was seven, it would be five, four, eight, three, six, rounded.
Five, four, five.
Five, four, eight, three, six.
Do you get any additional money in any other budget that ends up in your salary?
Uh, what, just recently, um, it's actually been in statute. It says nineteen ninety-seven, but I just started receiving.
I think that's reasonable.
It was two thousand dollars this twenty-twenty-five. And then I think you approved a thousand dollars for that one, and then the additional one that's only paid on even years.
Yep.
For twenty-five hundred. But other than that, no.
Calculate six percent.
Seven percent's twenty-five hundred dollars.
Comparable deal, the counties and that, that would make them really high paid.
We calculate six.
Um, six percent, so. Six percent is five, four, three, two, three.
Four, three, two, three.
Five, four, three, two, three.
Not to put you on the spot, Sharon, but how would you feel about a six percent bump to help cover the gap?
I, I mean, I, I would appreciate that. I think it's, it's a, it's a start. Um, but again.
You understand the position it puts us in.
Absolutely, absolutely.
When it comes to other departments.
Absolutely.
But we have, we have some precedent here on you getting zero when you.
And I think if you were to talk to the department heads, as Tracy has said, they were not in favor of the no raise and that it was personal. So to get that back where it's in line.
That, well, that's why I refigured it six instead of seven. Yeah.
I would vote on the six percent at five, four, three, two, three. Do we need to vote? Is that a motion?
Is that a motion?
Sure, all, all motion to do is six percent at five, four, three, two, three, and the clerk line.
I'll second.
Motion seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Motion approved, seven, oh.
Thank you.
All right, next on, okay, so do you girls have both those changes to the sixteen thousand and the seven hundred? Area plan, um, Mike gave his raise to the office assistant. I think we've visited that many times before and you just can't do that.
You just can't do, yeah, you can't.
Why?
Why, why can't we?
Everybody else start doing it.
It's on them, isn't it? It's not on us, if they wanna do it.
I mean, we, we approved his raise. If he wants to pay her, what, what difference does it make?
You'll have every, you'll have, I mean, you can, I'm not paying her, but.
Let's, let's vote on it. All those in, in favor.
Well, we can.
Hold on, hold up, hold up.
We need to discuss a little bit. I, I don't know what the reprofessions will be if we.
Other than other people doing.
Budget, you'll have ten that wanna give their salaries to their assistant. You'll have four that wanna give it to the office secretary. You'll have six that wanna give it to the office manager and.
Is that a bad thing, though?
I, I would hate to do that.
I know, it's a nightmare.
It's really messy.
Well, and, and then that position gets behind and then they come ask for ten percent.
Yep.
And they, and then they can say, well, I've been giving my, my raise away, so now I feel like I'm owed, you know, which we can say.
Because he is an elected official, so the next elected official's gonna say.
He's not.
Oh, wait, that's right.
Yeah, he's not elected.
I, I guess I didn't mean it like that. I mean, he is hired in at a certain amount. If he gives his raises away, the next one's gonna say, it's gonna look like he's underpaid.
Yeah, he could be giving away, I mean, that, that means his base salary does increase and then the next area planning commission guy can come in at a lower start, and he wouldn't have necessarily agreed to those, those raises over the year, however many years if he doesn't.
And some of those positions are hard to fill, like.
You just agree with area plan?
Is the area, is that person full-time? And they got three percent?
Him and his office administrator, yeah.
Got three percent.
I mean, if we're, if we're voting on it, I would move that we do it as we previously presented. I would, I would like the area plan director to still get a, a raise, and then his office admin to get a three percent as well.
Which is what we did.
Correct, so I would.
So, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
What, to leave it at the, at the same as what we're saying?
Yes.
Not changing it. That would be my motion, yeah.
Tracy seconded that.
All those in favor of everybody getting three percent and him keeping his raise, raise your hand.
Aye. Aye.
So that's staying the same. That, did you see us?
Staying.
So that's, that's a majority, all those against?
No.
Okay, so four to three passes to keep it the same, three percent for both.
Four to three?
Yes.
Yeah. The nays?
And actually, isn't there a little conflict interest with him voting?
What?
I voted.
I don't know what.
What do you mean?
Like because it's related to the person we're voting on.
Well, then in that case, I would be in trouble in the, in my wife or son or daughter, my brother runs a auto, you know.
Yeah.
I know, that gets tricky.
A lot of it I won't vote on, but it, it, this is just...
Okay, the next is a surveyor. Surveyor?
Cell phone.
Communication lines should be named cell phone and...
Yeah, can we, can we, can we switch the name of that?
And I explained to Tracy, I mean, she sent me an email about these changes, I had those changes ready to be made, that if I maintain them, it's gonna affect this year.
Oh, well, the surveyor.
We wouldn't make that, you wouldn't make these changes after January one?
I didn't send you that email because I wanted stuff done right away, that was just my notes. Communication section?
Yep.
And you wanted to say cell phone, so that's the only thing we can use.
Yep.
So the N B P tax report system that, I mean, I can't, let's visit that again, are we not, absolutely not going to do that?
I'm sorry, I was looking on the...
Still trying to find communications.
Sorry, I was...
Okay, say again?
The, uh, so obviously these departments have to pay fifteen hundred dollars something for, but if we switch to this new taxing, you guys don't have to pay, so we...
We don't pay maintenance on it, we're not gonna use it, but we have to use, we have to pay some maintenance up to when we stop.
Are we gonna visit switching that or we, did we ask that?
Well, our, our commissioners don't seem like they're for it, right?
What, the new software? Or the new computer? I was under the impression when we talked about it that we have to get the towers first because it can't support your stuff, isn't that what you guys said?
Server.
Yeah, because, the servers, because I thought you said, uh, um, Randy said that you have to get the, all of it updated. And that's, I thought that's how we were talking about it, it's like that's gotta be been, put in first to support it.
I didn't see anything about any towers.
Servers.
The servers.
Oh, the cloud, the cloud, okay.
I was, I was, I was... Yeah, I was under the impression we, that that had to be put in first before you can, everybody can switch that because it can't support it. I thought that's what you said last.
So it's kind of been asked, so, uh, we need to put the, uh, the fifteen oh four contract fee in then, because he has to pay his contract, right?
Yeah.
I thought it was in there. Why'd you bring it up though?
He just wanted to know if he...
He just, he just knew.
Oh, he just wanted to know if he...
And I said, I had one too, so I mean, you know, we're just gonna wait and see what, what happens.
Okay, transfer station is next, he wants a dollar for part-time and three per, more than three percent for him, I'm good with how this is.
Who was that? What'd you say?
Transfer station. The only other thing I have to bring up is that if every, I know we just cringed every time we heard trash removal, if we all get with our departments and say, find a new trash removal, I don't know if it's beneficial for somebody to take the lead and get with one company and say, hey, I've got this many trash companies, what kind of deal? Can you, I'm pointing at you Mike, because you're always good at that stuff.
I literally talked to trash cans on the phone yesterday and, um, by, for our business, and by switching trash cans, we are going to save sixteen hundred dollars a month.
So anyway, Mike just said it's commissioner thing, so do you wanna lead it up with your husband to, uh, go around and figure out how many trash companies we have?
I would get to a pretty...
Custodian, and there's one more, you know.
One, like trash cans or the ones that...
Well, they're doing trash cans.
Who is?
The custodian's moving, the park board's already been moving, and drop waste management, Ted's been sending letters for those two to drop our pluses.
See, this is, this is something I don't understand. Why would you not go as a group after and do everybody at once and give that group deal?
Well, because they're under contract, I'm assuming.
She just needs to be told to do it.
That, we were too, and it was cheaper to buy out the darn contract than it was to not switch.
Okay, that's all I have on my list.
Anybody else have anything? If you need a motion to approve the budget?
Not, not yet, you know.
Okay.
Why not?
You gotta re-pretty it.
The numbers.
Looks good from over here.
I'll second that.
Do you want me to put that on the agenda for Monday?
Sure.
Talk to him about it?
Sure.
Are they going?
Did I talk to them about two different things on the agenda?
Decide on the tax thing?
Yeah.
The tax system?
I, I'm confused because every employee I've talked to is in Florida, in Florida, so I don't understand why the commissioners are against moving forward.
What?
With the new...
I think they need to make a decision.
I think it's the money. I think it was the money that was...
But it's three installments. It's three, it's a hundred some thousand dollars a year for three years.
I don't know that that was presented as three installments.
Yeah, it was.
Did they vote?
It was not, she said.
I'm gonna tell you exactly what happened, I, they told me no right off the bat and I, I tried to tell them and I begged them to put it back in. I put it back in their budget and had, I said, before you sign, I said, I just want you to know, I put the tax and the financial software back in here because you need to, you need to discuss it and you need to find out about it. And so they did, they signed it, but then Bill presented it and he said no.
Yeah. I'm all for the software, I thought, I, the only reason why I thought we were holding off this year is because you had, whatever needed to be done with Randy to make it so it can support everybody.
Who said that? I have no idea about that.
I don't, we were, yeah, we were sitting here talking and he was just saying some, yeah.
The server doesn't, I mean, it, it doesn't mean that this...
That we could use a new server now.
Do we have to have a brand new server to do what you wanna do?
That's a question for Randy.
Yeah, I, I was under the impression when we, when he was talking to us about it, that, like, if you did the one before, that it, it could cause problems. And that's the only reason why we didn't do it this year, I'm sorry, I, maybe I misunderstood when we were talking, but I thought that's what we were talking about.
And I guess Melinda, since, since you're kinda heading us up on that, I mean, why don't you get with the rest of the employees that are for it and that and go to a commissioners meeting and say, why are you not for it and re-present it?
I've been to the commissioners meetings, I've also reached, reached out to the commissioner and I also listened to the record, live recording when Commissioner Brown presented his budget request. And it was very, very obvious to me that he did not understand, had absolutely zero understanding of what this tax software does and why it was needed. He made absolutely zero effort to talk to me, to talk to Randy, our computer person who says this... I'm talking, please, I'm, let me finish, please. You're a little bit biased, but he is my commissioner, I came to the commissioners and, and, and told them, made it very clear why I felt it was needed and, and that they could reach out to me. I have reached out to him, he's made zero effort to come talk to me. And, um, he, it was pretty clear when I watched the live that he apparently has had a bad experience with point-of-sale systems in their businesses and felt like softwares in general, programs were, you know, were just out to get your money and if they made bad decisions in their point-of-sale systems in their businesses, that does, that should not come through and follow in, into making a decision for our tax software. In the very next statement, he said how important the computers were. Well, how do you think computers work? They need the software.
So what, what does Scott and Warren say?
What's that?
What's Scott and Warren's opinion?
They haven't had an opinion, none of them have had questions or asked about it.
The first one to say no was Scott. And then they just went down the line, they just both said, no, 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 and I said, whoa, why not?
But you have three commissioners making a decision about software that they have absolutely zero knowledge about because it's a joint, it is a joint program that's used between the, primarily, the auditor's office, the treasurer's office, also the assessor's office and the surveyor's office. The commissioners haven't seen this software and have no, you know, the only reason they are brought into it is because it's a joint software program.
My biggest concern is that we have a treasurer that's gonna be leaving, we have an auditor that's gonna be leaving.
And Randy.
Why would you not want to have a better system and a easier system that is already up and running this next year for your new elected officials to come in to work with? Why would you wanna throw new elected officials, I mean, I just don't see, I mean, I, this is where I think Carroll County falls behind is in progress. They, they just choose things that don't benefit and then they, there's some things that I don't...
The other thing, the other thing resonates in commissioners' budget is because Melinda and I are both gonna be gone and we cannot sign a contract for the next person coming in. One other point is when I did become auditor the first time, I came in with two new programs that the girls didn't know either. So we all learned it together, we, we survived and we did okay. Point three is I was at conference last week and I talked to both EXOFC and, um, Alau and I have asked them that if I could set up something, I haven't talked to Melinda about this yet because I haven't had time. I got back Friday night, came back to work, had a commissioners meeting and budget stuff. But I wanna set up a meeting that I will set up for the commissioners and the council, a joint meeting, and have them both come and present the, the, uh, softwares.
I think that'd be great.
Okay.
I think, I think getting us both involved would be a good thing.
That's fine.
Yeah, we'll have that mentioned.
I have made peace with the fact that it's not happening and you know what? That's fine, I was just trying to look towards, basically do a favor to our successors. But if it's not gonna happen next year, that's okay, my last year in office will just be a breeze, so it's in your hands.
But I wanna say one other thing and I'm totally lost. It doesn't mean that we have to take it out of accounting general or we still have to do anything, we can do an additional, there's other options, that's what I meant when I was talking to Nada K earlier and I think you heard that. There's other options that we can do and yes, it might cost a little bit more to do the three, the three payments, but, um, that's how she's getting her software. She has her own account, so she doesn't need the permission to, to spend, so that's what I'm at.
For software, she has money set aside, that's what I said.
To reassess what she has, her own money, so that's why...
But the commissioners don't sign the contract?
If it's, if it is statutorily your duty as an elected official, it's in the statute that that's your duty, why would you sign the contract? Change the, but because these two are based on... They don't know, that way it's...
Did you have something for us to sign? Can we do it soon? Let's start it.
Okay, one.
How long do we need to recess to get our new, uh...
Do you want three, four papers back?
Four papers back.
Four. Brady, it's on you.
Paper airplane, right at her. Here's one.
Good job Brady, he's a successful...
I won, I started, so...
I didn't sign that one.
Yeah, it's gotta go to Tracy.
About what you're doing before you adopt one.
That's enough.
So you, so you know the whole picture.
Let's, let's say to Jackie.
Yes, please. We've got thirty more minutes.
No, I'm not gonna take thirty minutes.
No, I'm not.
So the sheet I gave to you this morning, obviously now is not correct, but it's close. The only thing we made a change in was county general. But what I wanna bring point to you, we're gonna adopt thirty thousand dollars over levy. I'm good with that because that's the flexibility we need for the Department of Local Government Finance to work the budget the way they work it. What I think you seriously need to think about, and I understand what you're doing and, and I have the passion for everything also, but what I seriously want you to think about moving forward, I'm not saying we need to change anything now, but I want you to think about this, you are adopting a budget that is a half a million dollars over your new money coming in. That's a lot of money. And it's okay this year? Will, will, would you mean how did we do that?
How did we get that much behind?
Well, I mean, some of our revenue is down a little bit, um, and then, and that's really even with me finding that extra revenue that we put in to be able to, to adjust this current year. But we are, our new money coming in is roughly, it's six point eight million in miscellaneous money and with a levy of two point three million, that's the, uh, budget, or we've got, uh, revenue of nine point one four nine million dollars and we are adopting a budget at nine million, six ninety-seven.
Why did we switch to three percent raises then?
We knew that all along. We knew all, I told you all along when we were there.
I thought we had extra money. No, I thought we had extra money, I thought that, that was why we...
We would be adopting with a six point five million.
Because if I'd known this, I would have never went to the three percent.
But I said it all along.
Well, it's done now.
Yeah, I mean, I've said it all along.
So we can't do it next year, right?
I guess I thought when you said you found this money, you found this money and you found that one.
Melinda, are you saying?
Yeah, I'm saying you.
And then the next thing I know Paul's like, well, we'll go to the three percent raises since you found this money in that. So I mean, if I didn't know this, I wouldn't have went to the three percent.
I don't know, we like, it said, we come in, we got the call that, like, we're fine and we're doing three percent and we come in and most of the work, like I said, it wasn't working. I, I, I just realized, I thought we'd come in under budget and then that's why we were doing the three too. I was, I, I had, I had no idea we're still over. By law.
I made the statement last week, the money that I found was current year money, not next year money. So it helped fund the remainder of the year. I got that, that got us...
Note this in your ears.
That got us...
No additionals.
So what, um...
Yeah, and...
Yeah, we'll have to go hard.
No payroll.
At the beginning of next year, we will have to go really hard after no additionals.
Two hundred fifty thousand right off the bat of the year really screwed us.
Yeah.
The places that you can control this is no encumbrances unless there are emergencies, don't just let people encumber money. And we have to encumber the, the quarter, we know that, um, that's in that murder trial. But just to, to encumber supplies or, or...
To me, this all needs to go out in the email.
Say no. Say no. I mean, we'll get a little more revenue than what is, is anticipated because I underestimate interest. We will not spend all of that budget, so the difference isn't a half million, but that's what we're...
I'm only shy of one.
If things came in just exactly like they are, we come up a half million dollars of new money, we still have six point five. I just want you aware of what this does.
And the biggest thing and the biggest chunk that's gonna save us is all these positions that aren't filled, unfortunately.
Right.
Yeah.
But you can't budget like this year after this, year after year, and you cannot let them come in and, and, and say, they're gonna leave if you don't give me money and you just can't do it. I know it's hard, but you can't.
The other thing you can look at on that sheet, if you look at it, is in those operating funds, local road and street, that one's kinda different. Nine-one-one, we're right, we're real close to the amount, we're coming in with two hundred eighty-nine thousand, we're budgeting at three thirty-three. The PSAP, we're coming in, um, we, we have an overage, we're, we're adopting at seven twenty-seven, we're bringing in about five eight five. JL Lit, we adopted one point three, we're coming in at one point three. EMS, we adopted at one point two five, we're coming in at one point three. Those, those are good money, numbers. And then the EMS in, um, non-regarding, we're bringing in five, actually, we're bringing in seven hundred thousand, or seven hundred thousand this year because we're not spending what's going in there right now. And they're, and we're budgeting six, so that's what this sheet does for you, it shows you over budgeting and that new money coming in.
Okay.
So by increasing one percent, how much did we increase?
Not that much. I mean, we still would have been, we still would have been...
But it adds up because one percent salary is forever.
Right.
One percent on a, on buying a new transport van is a one-time purchase, so that's the difference, the salaries is forever. The salaries is forever.
Yep.
Right.
But that's why I pass this out to you, so you can show on there, you can see where you are with new money coming in.
Unless we adopt a pay scale like we had spoke about, correct?
I mean, that would help, but if we just hold fast on additionals at the beginning of the year, that helps. Because otherwise, people, I mean, we did 250,000.
Until we see where we're at.
Immediately. So that's most of it right there.
You go through the mindset, and this is how I do it, is that unless it is a dire emergency-
Right.
-you can't do it.
And I think, I think it would be a good idea that you inform the elected officials and the department heads ahead of time.
I agree.
Get your bills in by the end of the year. We're not gonna be encumbrating money.
Well, that does add. She stands up.
I agree. The other thing I'd like to see, and this is not putting down anybody, but this session that we had today at 9:30 needs to be done after you do your budgets with the department heads, maybe a couple days later or something. And we wouldn't have this what we had today.
I'll state this again. We are, I said, we're late every year. I've always asked to do the budget a month earlier than we start.
Well, what I mean is talking to the department heads. This shouldn't have-
Everything should be earlier.
It should have not, and it won't take-
No, really.
Jackie's got numbers. We should be on her schedule.
Yeah.
Jackie, put us on your schedule already.
August 1st.
Feel this one?
What I'm saying though is if they, even though they don't get a piece of paper, if you tell them this is what they're thinking about, then they will, they can come and talk to you.
Are we gonna recess for 15 minutes? How long you guys need?
I don't think you took a vote yet. You did sign and that's all good, but if you would-
They don't have our numbers.
And we're getting them right now.
Oh, you're not even-
No.
We haven't printed the ordinance yet.
We're printing it right now. They're gonna do the changes now, so we still have 15 minutes.
I thought she'd already run for it. That's why she knew how much we were over.
Yeah, 12:15.
Yay. Hands in. Money on three.
You know what? You guys being first here, they get really good doing the budget.
Did better than I did.
Yes.
I was lost. I just laid there and went.
Then I go home at night and it's like, ah.
We were dreading the budget. That was relative.
Brady, you had a little inside, you were kind of how it works.
I would love to know what the 1% is, the one that's salary.
Well, I'm- Sorry. Um, I need to talk to you. Sure.
I think it's more than 100K.
Ah, I gotta do that so bad.
You may still be on, I'm not sure, so. I do not know. You guys got meetings after this too?
I will.
Are you done? Y'all finished after this meeting?
I gotta go home.
I was gonna say, it's a long day for you guys. I just got here at 10. You've been going at it.
Oh, I guess they took a break.
They took 15 minutes.
Huh?
I believe they took 15 minutes.
Well, they're probably right here in the courthouse. Look at it.
Are we still on, young lady? During our recess? Said they didn't want to do what? Recession? I want to ask you something. In your office, when you're ready. That you just got back here. It's fine. That's what I say in the morning. Video's still live. That thing's fully charged now. That wasn't his adapter, was it? That was yours that was on the counter?
Did you want to run a copy for all of them to see? Did you explain to them that we went up above war?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We wanted an email to go out to department heads stating it and saying, nope, that we're over. And that we're not gonna do encumbrances at the end of the year unless it's an emergency and that we're-
You're gonna give that to me on that.
And be ready for no additionals, especially the first three or four months of the year. Till we see how things are settling out. So we can have it on record as, just so you're clear, we pushed through some raises and some department shifts and, you know, things like that. But what that means is we gotta hold firm next year.
Every time you go to another county, you visit somebody, take some of their paper clips, take some of their paper. Steal stuff from their office. Need to know how I employ some of my ex-military buddies. We're good at tactically acquiring stuff.
Tactically acquiring stuff?
Yep. I've tactically acquired a couple vehicles. Almost lost them out in the middle of the swamp. I stole, I stole taxi vehicles in three different states. From the military people.
Luckily, since we said 15 minutes, I didn't think anybody was gonna leave the premises. You know what I mean? My guess was that just run to the restroom downstairs.
Right.
Coming back.
No.
You're walking up steps.
Good.
Is Tracy here too?
Starting here, retreating early.
Those things are awesome.
It's the only ones I eat anymore.
Not yet.
And boy, I ate way too many of the recent-
I just didn't want to miss them.
It's all I care about.
I would have caught up with you. Okay, so here we go. That's that baby. Just use yours. No, 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 no. Both of them together.
I'm eating half of his. His is better than mine, I can tell.
Use yours. Give Paul one.
Let me give mine to Taylor.
No, just keep it that way. I know he's gonna pass.
Thank you.
Okay, we're still live streaming. I just have to turn it on to record. And I have the signature page, so you don't have that.
Jackie, what was that?
Tracy's not here.
700 or 800,000 that you said was-
Stabilization fund?
Money, stabilization.
Yeah, it's from the stabilization fund from levy raise.
Is that where we were confused?
It was, that was current year money.
Okay.
But what that did was get us within the levy. We were, we were way over levy.
But-
We couldn't even-
Right.
We couldn't even adopt what we had in there. We got that money, the rest of the money that made us over so we could send that money out in June.
Hey. When we went from 2% to 3%, that was one of the big reasons, right? And I think Jackie did say, "That's not guaranteed next year, we're hopeful."
Well, that stabilization money won't. It won't. I mean, if this is just now, it's not accounted. It's probably covering, I'm gonna guess here, probably 1.8 million and we're gonna cover 1.5 million that we're gonna send out to the, not just Carroll County, but the other-
And that's not accounted for.
Yeah.
Well, we don't, we don't account for it as revenue.
Did all those papers get back? Did I make it sound? I don't know if Brady's responsibility.
Brady's got them.
Yep, they're back.
Did you sign them? Okay.
And then here is the signature line for the budget that I gave you a copy of, right there. So this document she showed on shows that your total budget is 23,520,872 dollars. It's what this ordinance is showing you with a breakdown by five. And then, 23,52872.
There you go.
Add those two together.
Okay.
That's what I was saying. The funds at the top are the ones that the Department of Local Government Finance reviews. The ones on the second page are your home loan lines.
Just need to vote, huh?
We won't need a motion to have a vote.
Yeah, who's gonna motion?
For the budget, correct? So I'll make a motion that we approve the 2026 budget as presented.
Second?
All second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
There was a motion that you were gonna tell me that would email just go out?
Oh, yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we send out an email to all the department heads that we are over, right Jackie?
And we're over levy.
We're over levy in the amount of-
Well, we're over levy by 30,000, but we're spending a half a million more in new money than-
Yep, that we're spending a half a million more in new money than, in new money.
Right.
Correct?
Yes, that's what I'm spending.
A half a million in new money, more than our new money coming in. And the encumbrances by the end of the year should only be an emergency?
Even if they do file them, can you deny that?
Correct, which we will.
It's easier not to say no if they don't break them. They know we're already in trouble.
Right.
Encumbrances need to be-
Emergency only. And that-
No, you can't encumber till next year. They have to spend it before that.
But don't they have to give away the receipt?
No, we have had them before December 31st.
And the additionals at the beginning of next year will be heavily scrutinized.
I second.
However you wanna list-
I like the scrutinized.
Like heavily scrutinized?
It's a good word. I like it.
Heavenly, not heavenly.
It will not be heavenly.
If our math don't math, we're not mathin'.
There you go.
So. And Brady, Ricky, Brady second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And you're gonna put it in the format that this is from the council majority, or excuse me, unanimous vote of the council. Right, ma'am? Which may be a little different because I think you've done it in the past, now we just got a little extra.
You got a little extra beef behind it, yeah. So that way we have something in writing that tells them, "Hey, we told you at the end of the year and we're telling you at the beginning of next year."
Oh.
Oh, you've got it. Read what you got.
Well, I, but it's not on here.
Oh.
Could you read it back though?
I say that Taylor Biden made a motion that all departments, or to send out a text to all departments that we are over levy and we are spending one half million in new money coming in.
Over the new money.
Over the new money.
Sending out an email.
More than the new money.
Encumbrances need to be emergency only, filed by December 31st. Well, really, it's before that, I'll change that date.
Good.
Yep. And?
And that the additionals will be heavily scrutinized.
Don't say heavenly, because you just said heavenly. Okay.
Could be heavenly.
So moved.
So moved.
So, did we pass that?
Brady?
No, 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 that was Taylor.
I motioned it.
I second.
Brady seconded. And it was unanimous. And I agree with Eric that we should, it should be with the backing of the, unanimous backing of the council. We're informing you of-
Now we can close the meeting.
I got one more thing to add. So our next decisions are the edit funding that we probably will be getting an edit funding package of who is requesting what. They did approve like four or five of them and I get, I just haven't had time to send them out to you, but I will do that and I will advertise them for the November meeting because they might not do the rest of them until the end of November or whatever. Can we look at those in December because we don't have to pay them out in January, correct?
Yeah.
Is it okay if we don't go over the edit things until December? I cannot be at the November meeting and I would like to go, you know?
Yes.
That would be fine.
We would like you here. Yes.
Whoa, whoa. Like her to be here.
Like her to be here.
A couple of them need it for their, like, family services, as senior citizens, they need it for their budgeting. I'm not, that's really the only one is-
So handle, handle only what we have to in November?
Right.
Okay.
Pretty much know that I can give them advertised so that way they'll be all over December and November.
That's fine, that's fine. So we'll only address the ones in November that need addressed as far as edit requests and then we'll save the bulk up and for December.
Which is only like the, I think it's the $10,000 and they use that for fuel and for the transportation for the seniors.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes 7-0.
Let's go.
Thank you all.
I said man. I wanna stay longer.
We got a majority.